Everybody, everybody all set?
Do it.
Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the record, this meeting is being held on October 4th, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Sparta Township Municipal Building, located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And the livestream can be viewed at, on YouTube at www.youtube.com/aspartatwp township. Please note that adequate public notice that the meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's all begin, please, with a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public which stands in one nation, united, out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Chairwoman Luciano, since her regret, she's home ill today, so I'll be filling in for her. Dory, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Bill Enright.
Here.
Justin Canales.
Here.
Angela Cassie.
Here.
Ernie Reichstand.
Here.
Mike Sylvester.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess the next item on the agenda is we have approval of four sets of minutes. So, Mr. Collins, we've got...
Yes, Mr. Sylvester can move those and adopt them himself.
Okay.
Can we do them all at the same time?
Yes, since you're the only person yet.
I'll make a motion to move and approve all the minutes of June 15th, July 6th, August 3rd, September 21st, 2022.
Okay.
And there's no need for a second because you're the only person who can vote, so roll call by, for Mr. Sylvester for all four.
I do a roll call for everybody, Tom, I'm sorry.
No, just for Mr. Sylvester.
Okay, Mr. Sylvester.
Here. And yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. There are no pending resolutions that I'm aware of tonight. Is that correct, Dory?
That's correct.
None, that's correct.
Okay, great. So...
Mr. Chairman, I recuse on this next matter, so I'm going to step down and recuse. And Dave Brady, Conflict Counsel, is here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to step forward, please. Welcome.
Chairman, can you do a small request? That'll work. Let me start. Could they use landmark or something to indicate where the location is? Usually I spend half my presidency trying to figure out where to call that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so this is application 707, Olympia Holdings, on One North Village Road, North Village Boulevard, B 1608, Lot 7, Building J, site plan. Welcome.
Yeah, good evening, members of the board. John Urson, Shane Price, I'm here for the applicant tonight. This is an application for an amended site plan. This is in North Village. It's referred to in the application as Building J. This is... This is Block 16008, Lot 7, and the street address is One North Village Boulevard, which is on the corner of Route 15, where the Chelsea Senior Living is just behind this. And just by way of introduction, this is a site that was approved as part of the North Village Plan some years ago. And on this particular lot, the previous approval was for 23 apartments in a three-story building with 2,600 square feet of commercial space. So, the application tonight, we think we're here that it's a greatly reduced proposal, but fits with the rest of, the rest of the development. And so, if you want to swear, we're going to call Mr. Dykstra as the engineer and Mr. Wolverton as the architect. I don't know whether you'd like to swear them both in at the same time.
Would you both raise your right hand, please? Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And then, for the record, if we start with Mr. Dykstra and then go to Mr. Wolverton, if you'd place your name in the record, give us an address, business address is fine. Make sure you spell your last name so we can get it right.
Okay. Owen Dykstra, D Y K S T R A. Business address is 11 Lawrence Road, New Jersey.
Chris Wolverton, W O L V E R T O N. HQW Architects. Business address is 14 North Village Plaza.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to qualify Mr. Dykstra as an expert? I know he's here fairly frequently.
Mr. Brady? There's no need to qualify him if the board's seen him, and I know he's been before other boards I represent, so we can just accept him as an expert in professional engineering.
Correct.
Anybody have any concerns? Okay, I think we're good, thank you.
Mr. Dykstra, let's, let's get started with the application. If you could ever so briefly give an overview of the site in this location. Sure. That would be a good starting place. As requested, I'll give you a little orientation. This is Market Exhibit A1. A drone photo taken in late August, so it's recent. It affects North Village as it currently stands.
For my notes, Mr. Dykstra, that's a drone photo from a westerly perspective, or how do we describe that?
It's looking, this is north, northeast.
Look, okay, looking northeast, okay.
So, it's basically looking up North Village Boulevard from across the street. North Village is an 88-acre site that we've been developing over the last 20 years. This is the last remaining parcel in North Village. It's located at the intersection of North Village Boulevard, Route 15, and Market Street. It's opposite the Starbucks and adjacent to the Chelsea. And behind it is the condominium complex. The site was approved in 2019 for a three-story mixed-use building. The first floor was commercial and it had 23 apartments proposed. That project was put on hold due to pandemic. And as a result, we reconsidered the site. We've reduced the scope of the project. We've come back with approximately 7,000 square foot retail building. The prior approvals established the architectural and landscape design standards for the overall site, and that's what we've been utilizing for the design and landscape onsite, as well as the architectural design. The post-commercial and resident restaurant with the drive-up window is a permitted use in the zone. And the overall planned Village Core compliance items that were addressed in the planner's report, I run through them because it's kind of an overall item that was required as part of the plan development. There was a requirement that it be seven acres minimum, the overall site, and we had 88 acres. There was also a requirement that 5% of the developable area be dedicated as civic space. And before this project goes, it would be at 8%. It's comprised, there's a green ethno-Shopright Plaza, as well as a plaza adjacent to the Paris Salon. There's a large park in the center. There's a park adjacent to the single-family and a small potlot in the rear. And then there's a park on the townhouse project. It also required at least one main gathering area for the site. We proposed two for the original site. One was this plaza that kind of is at the intersection of exit from Shopright to North Village Boulevard and the main park. On this site, we have a patio which acts as a gathering place as well. It will accommodate 16 seats and will be used for outdoor dining. I'll put up a colorized version of the site plan. I'll post Exhibit A2. It dated 9/6/2023 and revised today. It's called Site Exhibit Plan.
Did you say revised today?
Yes.
Okay.
As you know, when we were here last month, we, we went back to the drawing board based on meeting the letter that came from the Police Department. We met with the Police Department. We also had discussions with the Fire Department, just to make sure we met their requirements and made them, took care of their concerns. So, this plan was revised based on, on those changes, and that's why it's been revised. And in addition, we moved the building back so it's 100 feet off the height, whereas before we had it 37 feet, and that eliminated a variance. So, the building as proposed can accommodate up to three tenants. It's set back 100 feet from Route 15 as required. It's been designed in accordance with the approved architectural design standards for the planned Village Core. Chipotle will take the 2,500 square foot approximately end cap, and that leaves about 3,100 square feet for the tenant 2 and 3, and that may be one tenant, depending how, how it works out. It's aligned, so it can be one tenant or two. The building is oriented parallel to North Village Boulevard. It has 31 stall parking lot where 28 are required. There are two proposed accessible parking stalls located right adjacent to the middle of the entrances. And there's two stalls that are designated as EV-ready. There's a sidewalk that's between the building and the parking lot. The ordinance has a design standard that you require four-foot planting strip between the parking lot and the sidewalk. We're requesting a waiver for that. That waiver has been granted on every site plan that we've done in North Village, so it's pretty standard. It's, it allows people they don't have to walk through mulch to get to the sidewalk. So... Access is from Market Street, so you come into the site by North Village Boulevard. There's a left turn lane into Market Street, then you can go left into the site. The circulation onsite, if you're going to the stores and you're going to park, you would take a left, and you park in the parking lot and walk into stores. We also have a drive-up window. It's a digital drive-up, so there's no order board. There's no ordering onsite. You order on your phone or on your computer, and then they notify you when it's ready. Then you come and show up, and you can pick it up at the pickup window, or you can park in one of the pickup designated stalls for pickup. So, there's no real queuing anticipated in these types of events because people show up when their food is ready. And if they're not ready, they have pull-through spaces, so they just tell them to go wait there, and they'll bring it out to them when it is ready. There are two dumpster locations onsite, one for the tenant 2 and 3, and one for the Chipotle. We separate them because the food uses, are, it's nice to keep them separated. They like to control their own garbage. Deliveries and trash pickup typically are in the morning hours. So, it shouldn't disturb like the neighborhood as far as fun it is. Also, as part of the redesign, we, we changed this access to service only, service vehicles only. It allows for a truck to come through here to drop, pick up the garbage, and make its way out without having to turn around internally. So, it's a better site design. Other than that, it's service vehicles only, so all of the access for the general public will be through this entrance on the north side. A stormwater collection system has been provided to roof the, the stormwater to the existing stormwater system. The existing stormwater was, system was designed to accommodate 60% impervious on this site. We're at a little bit over 56%, and that's what the ordinance allows, 60%. Lighting has been provided onsite to be consistent with the overall planned Village Core, so all the lights have the same look, the same temperature. I know the environmental committee requested a lower temperature, but we feel it would look out of place when all the lights of the whole complex is at 4,000, because it would be, the 3,000 is a yellow light. So, we're gonna, we're gonna stick with the 4,000 and keep it consistent. The lights will be on from dusk till dawn, where the parking area lights are dimmed in the evening after hours, but they're not turned off for security reasons. Chipotle's typical hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And all signage for this facility will be on the building. There's no proposed monument sign for this building, so it's important to maintain view lines from North Village Boulevard. I know as Dave reported, he mentioned a buffer along that line, but we don't feel it's appropriate, given that's the only way you can see these buildings, as well as the plan as proposed is consistent with the architectural design standards, which are the standards for this site. Also, the landscaping design utilizes non-invasive native species. The site is served by public sewer and municipal water. And I think that covers pretty much everything I had. Other co-op fee, we'll pay the co-op fee 2.5%. It's typical for a retail site. One other thing I forgot, there's a outdoor dining. That's a conditional use in the ordinance. We did run through the conditional use requirements. We added them to the cover sheet of the updated plan, and we do meet those conditions. Mr. Chairman, does the, the board have any questions of Mr. Dykstra? Or Mr. Dykstra did submit a letter that was responsive to Mr. Pello and some of the other comments that we, Mr. Simmons, and some of the other comments we received? So, board's prerogative, do you want to ask questions first? Or do you want us to review Mr. Simmons's comments first?
Um, any preference?
I have a, I have a question. How is the Chelsea connected to the Chipotle?
Physically, or...
How would a car...
A car would enter the Chelsea driveway. Well, no cars would, just service vehicle service the facility.
So, when somebody has gotten their order and they're leaving, and they see a bunch of traffic on the North Village Boulevard, and they want to go to Market Street, and they want to hang a left, could they access the Chelsea and sneak out through there?
Physically, they could. Legally, they couldn't. It's, Mr. Dykstra, it's coming from the Chelsea. It'll be signed for service vehicles only, correct? Yes. And it'll be marked one way coming in that direction?
And you have an access agreement in place with Chelsea to use that? Is that a third-party agreement?
No, we have an access agreement across that part of Chelsea. Correct.
Mr. Dykstra, could you just show on that other map exactly where the Chipotle is? So, so, right there. So, where's the Starbucks? I'm sorry, I'm just having, right there, so it's right across.
Yeah, it's exactly, there's this one, the infarctal right across from Starbucks.
So, I have a few questions just for now to start with. How, you mentioned in the beginning that site plan was revised today. So, anything we've seen is not what you show there, is that correct?
No, the site plan wasn't revised today. The colorized rendition that I'm showing of it.
Okay.
The site plan was handed in.
Okay, just to make sure there's nothing on here we haven't seen close up to study.
The colorized version of what you...
Okay, thank you. You mentioned a couple things. Quickly, again, can you read, the trash pickup hours? Can you remind me of those again?
They're typically morning hours. Chipotle opens at 10:00 AM, so I'd imagine they would come back timeframe.
Okay, is that, is that a commitment that they're morning hours? Or is that...
We don't control the trash companies. I mean, they can, the tenants control, might control it or the management company for the site. So, we can, we can tell them not to come, but...
But that goes back to my question about the agreement. Is that, how is that agreement arranged between, I guess, North Village and Chelsea? I mean, is that on, because it's an easement, it's fully accessible? Or in the event that gets shut down, would the service vehicles have to go around through the main entrance? Is there any reason that would prevent that service entrance from not being used?
No, it's recorded per minute easement to the property. Yeah, it can.
Unlimited duration, right? There's not a term to that agreement?
Correct.
I don't know the details, I didn't read it, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no conditions. It can't be revoked, nothing like that.
So, you mentioned also cars that, vehicles that approach the restaurant that have ordered, because you can't order there. If the food is not ready, they'll be directed to pull forward to some of the waiting areas. How will the purchaser receive their food? Will they be crossing in front of traffic and cars to try to get to the window to go pick up food? Will it be, can you explain that?
Yes, if that happens, they pull forward. There's pull-forward spaces. And then Chipotle employee typically will walk it out to the car.
Okay, so you keep using the word typically. I don't mean to be a detailer, but you say typically. So, is that, there's a possibility that a person who's hungry will walk up, get out of the car and walk up and stand by the window when cars are coming by to pick up food as well?
No, they would walk into the building, not that typically.
Okay, and they would pick up their food inside then?
Yes.
Okay.
How many pull-forward spaces are there? When you pull forward?
There's two.
Two. And if those are occupied, they would just kind of go into the, the larger...
They can pick any space, but those are the ones that are designated, so they're left empty.
And then they would just circle back around if they...
And, and, Mr. Dykstra, for the, for these questions, this is a model that Chipotle currently uses. Yes. And Chipotle is, has given the guidelines that they think they only need two pull-forward spaces. That's correct. And that's because they think that people understand that they don't pull up to the window until their phone busses. Correct.
Would you be so kind to just walk us through the circulation of that? Take that scenario you just explained and how a car would enter?
Car would enter the site from Market Street.
Mm-hmm.
If they're going to pick up at the pickup window, they'd make a right and then through that driveway. The sign here, or then another one here, to drive them that way.
They would go around...
This would be a digital order, digital order, and then they'd come and they'd pull up to the...
And then exit back out.
And then if their food wasn't ready, they'd pull forward to here.
And if not, they would go back out?
Back, that's correct.
Cars pulling in, going to their left, are limited and restricted just to the parking area up until that patio area?
At this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a general top level question that someone can help me with. So, when I look at the North Village history, there were a lot of different site plans involved. I think four or five different site plans. And there's one top level that had impervious coverage and all those type numbers said for this plan development, this is what we're committing to. So, when we're looking at this at 707 as a standalone, how, how do I know that something we're doing here is not going to trip a threshold on the overall top-level site plan? Such as impervious coverage. But here, here it's showing is, I think, 56.1%. But does that put the overall into something higher than what we committed to with the overall site plan?
Well, each site is entitled to 60% impervious coverage.
Is, is that how, how it was done? Or when they did the plan development, it was done that way? Okay, so we can look at this as a standalone?
Yes, when they, Mr. Chairman, when the original overall development plan came in, it was basically set up conceptually, if you will.
Okay.
This particular area, I think it was about 92 single-family homes at the northeast of the end. There was the grocery store. There were the commercial pads. There was, at one time, there was a hotel. And then there were these areas right here. And basically, the overall drainage system was designed to certain detention and infiltration basins in order to handle a certain amount of impervious coverage, certain amount of square footage, in a general sense, if you will. And as the project progressed over the years in different sections, whether it was the residential part or the commercial part, our office would take those detailed site plans, if you will, and compare them to what conceptually was assumed for purposes of coming up with the plan development to make sure it was generally within those guidelines.
Okay. So, so the last site plan, I believe, for Building J was 574. And, and that had certain approvals and conditions and stuff. So, I guess being that we're looking at this, is, is not a change to 574? The approvals that were in place for, for 574, do they stand here? Or is this a bottoms-up review?
I think in this particular case, as you said, the other site plan was conditionally approved. It never went forward. So, this came in, and we looked at it basically like a new application.
Okay.
And again, looked at it from the standpoint, will the drainage, the sewer plant, the water system and what have you all work together? For example, with the easement that you've been asking some questions about, I remember on the final flats for various sections of this, that easement was shown on there when there was a revision date. In addition, on this particular site, if Mr. Dykstra could point to the infiltration basin in the front by Route 15, that's always been there.
Yep.
And that's how the drainage from the previous application for the apartments in the retail store is going to drain also. So, basically, it's doing the same thing conceptually that it was originally designed for, but they're just changing the use in the building.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have, I have a few more. The landscape that you mentioned is going to be similar to what's already planted throughout the entire development?
Yes.
Consistent with? Okay. Signage, where was the signage going to go?
There's Chipotle signs on the building. And there's a sign reached in it, so there's...
And that space has not been yet? You have no letters of intent for...
We do not.
Lease or empty right now?
We're just getting ready to market it, assuming this gets approved.
And then similar to, I remember when Pizza Uno was going in there, there was some type, I, I think what I'm concerned about is having empty storefrontage. And in the past, they would put some type of screening or some type of, it was more window screening to show that you just don't have empty spaces there until it's occupied. Is that similar intent that the owner would do? If you recall, when Pizza Uno and others were going in there and they were building out the space, we were concerned, the town was concerned from the aesthetics and just too much vacancy. It just didn't look good, is to put some window screening in there. Is that similar, and would you be open to that until that space is rented?
The good news is this site is 100% occupied now, so we have... Hopefully, we won't be in that situation.
Although that's accurate.
We signed the lease for the last piece.
You get where I'm going with it. I mean, as we're building out and you were filling that space, there was still some aesthetic continuity with that area.
Yeah, understood. We can certainly cover the windows.
I think that's important to residents and people that live in and around the adjacent area.
So, Mr. Dykstra, you mentioned the solid waste storage areas. I noticed there are two separate ones, right?
Yes.
One in the, the north corner and one in the south corner. The south corner is the one most visible, right? It's right on the intersection. It's facing 15 and Starbucks and North Village Boulevard. Can you explain again why there's a need for two? And how will that front one be screened? I mean, that could be potentially an eyesore?
If you drive through North Village, you'd see, we have a lot of dumpsters located throughout it, and they are in the front yards and adjacent to things like that. And it's just the nature of the sites, because you see them from all sides. But we do screen them. Basically, we have a company that designs our screens, and they're decorative, and then we, we landscape around them, so they kind of disappear into the environment there.
Can you describe the landscaping around them?
Sure, we have a number of, of green trees immediately around it, and that'll create a blockade for that area. So, when you drive in, and then North Village, the big sign, that's like 10 feet tall, you know, that, that blocks the view as well. Between the two, we, I think if you go over there, you'll see we do a really nice job of landscaping the facility. We go above and beyond what's on our plans to make it look really nice. It's just as important to us to have it aesthetically pleasing.
Will there be a generator still? Will there be a generator still? I know in the original plans, there was a generator.
There's no generator.
There's no generator in this plan, okay. And then we've referenced that side entrance and the connection with Chelsea a number of times. So at some point, we're going to need to talk about your thoughts and your reactions to the number of Sparta Police Department reports about their safety concerns. I don't know if you want to do that now, if you want to wait, because there have been pretty strong concerns coming from the Sparta Police Review.
I had a meeting with the Sparta Police Traffic Expert. We went over the plan, because that was why we stopped last time, because of that letter. So I wanted to sit with him, go over it. We discussed, his goal was to close this, that's what he would have liked to see. At the same time, the fire department wants it open, so it's like two opposing forces. So what we came to was we would limit it to just service vehicles, so it wouldn't be a public entrance.
But the report still is very concerned that people will still enter and exit from that, regardless of what the sign it says and what your intent is.
Is there a new report?
This is September 22nd. Yeah, it does state that they recognize the fire department's recommendations for that access point in terms of width, but they also state that that is about the dimensions of the access point, that according to code, the access point is not required for emergency response. And their recommendation is to not have that be accessible and closed. So have you considered that, closing that off, and what would be the detriment?
We have considered it. We don't feel it limits our ability to get the trucks to the loading area. I think it's a much better plan with it open. And it's been designed so this is, you can't exit here. You can't go that way, this is one-way. The direction here that you come through, at this point, you're not going to turn around and go out that exit. So I don't see it as a, very likely that people are going to try to make this, come out here and make this turn to try to get out. And it's shown as a one-way.
Where was the pickup window on that? Okay, and that whole area is a one-way heading south?
All of this is one-way. And this is the dumpster enclosure, and then this is the one-way. Otherwise, it'd be difficult, you'd have to have trucks back out. I think that's less safe than having people.
No, we understand that. I think the concern is preventing the public that's getting frustrated, that may be in line, canceled their order, didn't want to wait, or someone wants to cut through, or someone wants to beat traffic and whipping around zigzagging through and still using that to exit out of there. Unless there's signage, some type of, and I understand that they didn't want to block the access, but some type of police, I don't know what the police could find.
Sure, so the signage will be there, but the center adopts the motor vehicle codes and they're enforceable, right? So no different than if the township of Sparta had a one-way down by the plaza and somebody went the wrong way up it. The police officer or any person can write a ticket that says you violated it. It applies equally here. So it's going to be enforceable through, you know, applicable motor vehicle laws that are adopted by the center. So if someone, you know, we could sit here and talk about the hypotheticals of it, you know, because people violate motor vehicle laws, like we get the point.
And that's not a hypothetical. I could guarantee you the first week that's in there, that's going to happen.
100%, and the first three people that get a ticket for going the wrong way on a one-way, word will get around, don't do that, because, you know, the shopping center owner is watching or the police are watching.
One thing, if I could, just make a suggestion. I think there's going to be a lot of questions in this area. But I want to give Dave, Mrs. Simmons, a chance to go through his memory, because I think a lot of the questions we have probably are tied to that as well as with Catherine. Would it make sense to maybe let the professionals go through your questions? And then we're going to bring it back to the dais and have everyone ask any questions that weren't answered. Okay, Mrs. Simmons?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Just referring for the record to the report, the latest report I prepared dated September 27, 2023. Basically, the applicant, through their presentation so far, has addressed several of the comments that I made with regards to zoning. We talked about the impervious coverage and how the overall center was looked at originally to limit the development impervious coverage, and they've met that. Mr. Dykstra talked about the four-foot minimum setback from the sidewalk to the parking areas.
Now, would that require a waiver?
Yes, on the south side of the proposed building. I'm not suggesting that I object to that, but it's one of the things that they need a waiver from, if the boards ever allow that. With regards to the drive-through, I'm glad Mr. Dykstra clarified that, because all the drive-throughs that we normally see have an ordering board, which takes a certain amount of time for the customer to get up, order, process and go through. And I don't know, I don't think Mr. Dykstra mentioned it, but he indicated that there was room for, I believe, eight vehicles to stack in, which is a considerable amount of vehicles versus what some original applications had. So based on the discussion here tonight, you have a situation where, basically, when somebody pulls up to the site, my understanding is from their operation, they're going to be ready to pull up. I'm order number 123. They'll pull around, they'll pay, they'll get their order and leave. So I think it's a more expeditious arrangement as far as that goes. I did make the recommendations for some additional signing where the two lanes converge, be it the drive-through and the service road entrance. And Mr. Dykstra agreed to provide that signage. There were some easements that are existing, be it the access easement, a drainage easement, the site triangle easement. I just wanted to make sure that all those easements had in fact been recorded. Not that Mr. Dykstra has that situation here, but in different applications over the years, sometimes we get along and people get their CO and those easements never physically get recorded. And this way, if we've got the book and page and the actual documents, we can verify that and we know it's all in place, just like the applicant indicated that they were or will be.
So who has the action to record those? How does that happen?
My assumption to be confirmed is that Mr. Dykstra and his group have already recorded those easements. Basically, what I'm looking for is a copy of those documents, plus the book and page on the site plan, so that 50 years from now, if someone's trying to come in to the board and do something different, they can look at that and say, the Sparta Planning Board made sure that was done back in 2023. I did note, once the site plan was developed, a little bit more that the existing fire hydrant extends slightly over the right-of-way line of the main road onto the subject property. And Mr. Dykstra agreed to provide an easement for that, just so that was taken care of. Architecturally, I know my second comment was how are the HVAC units going to be screened? And the response I got, the revised response I got this afternoon, was that they're going to be behind the screening on top of the parapet, on top of the existing building. And as far as the architectural plans of the building, I would defer to Mr. Wolverton when he comes up to explain that to the board. If that's all right, Mr. Chairman. Stormwater management, again, they just clarified that HDPE pipe was going to be used for the site. And again, that's fine, and it all basically drains towards the infiltration basins closer to Route 15. The capacity and the location of the roof drains going into that area are to be delineated on the plan, and they agreed to do that. With regards to the lighting plan, the one question I had was, they do have downward-facing fixtures. And again, this ties a little bit into the architectural plan, so if the applicant wants to defer to that. As we had asked about the light fixtures that are proposed for the building itself, and in the color rendering that I got as part of the attachments tonight when I got here, it shows a lot of indirect lighting on the building. Perhaps Mr. Wolverton can comment on that, if in fact, that's what's proposed for the site. I just want to make sure what the board's looking at is in fact what they're proposing. With regards to the water system, again, it's the township water system, and they just have to verify flows and pressures. My understanding from a response, and again, I think Mr. Wolverton can confirm this, that sprinklers are not being required or are not required for these particular building suites. So that should take care of that. They are connecting on to the sanitary sewer system, so that's taken care of. With regards to signage, the applicant did provide details of the Chipotle signage. It's basically just going to be, as I understand it, on the facade of the building. The other signs for the other two potential tenants or one tenant, if they merge those two sites, or suites rather, would basically be subject to complying with the township sign ordinance. There's no details yet, because they don't have a tenant yet, as I understand it. With regards to landscaping, I will say that they did beef up the landscaping from the initial submission. When I was out on site, when you look at the infiltration basin in front of the industry restaurant and what have you, it's a very densely and robust populated area with landscape materials, it's very nice. When you went over to this particular site, a little on the west side. So they addressed that and added that in to make that similar, so I compliment them on that. I had referenced the normal section of the township's code for certain landscaping in the island areas of the parking lot. Mr. Dykstra pointed out that way back many years ago, apparently, just like the architectural standards, there were some landscape standards that were put forward for this particular project overall. The only thing I would suggest on that, if it's acceptable to the applicant and the board, he could provide those standards, just so we can check it against it. I'm not saying they don't meet it, but it's been many years, so I'd like to have our landscape architect just look at that. They do have, with regards to the outside eating area for the Chipotle, the outside patio area, we just want to make sure the street furniture that they're putting in, just like they did in other areas of the development over by the ShopRite, are good quality pieces of street furniture, which I'm sure they will be. They did not provide a separate EIS for this application. Again, looking back many years ago when they did the overall development, there was an EIS provided for the overall site. And as far as I can tell, looking at what's being proposed, it basically goes along the same lines. We did list the various agencies that I'm aware of, that they have to get approval of. The board were to approve the application. They have to do the COA, the COA fee. And as normal, we normally recommend, and the applicant provides an as-built plan, just so we can make sure when everything was done, it falls into the guidelines that the board wanted and conditionally approved. And those are the highlights of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, as I think Mr. Simmons summarized as he went through, we're in agreement and have been in agreement with all of his comments and will meet all of the items that he referenced as he went through his report.
Does that include all the landscape items that were in your report?
I would assume, with the exception of the quotes that I made on the existing ordinance, because it's being replaced by what was developed, apparently with the design standards many years ago. So the condition on that, Mr. Blumente, would be to check the landscaping that's been revised and shown in the current plans against those standards as well.
Okay, so I understand there was shade tree requirements, there was interior parking vegetation requirements, is that correct?
Right, that's the way the ordinance reads for a quote-unquote "normal" site plan, if you will, that didn't have a planned development behind it. But in this particular case, in their parking lot, they don't have bulleted islands where they could put some shade trees or other shrubbery and what have you. That's not part of it, because this part of the ordinance for landscaping was superseded by the standards that were developed years ago.
Those standards were from the original plans for North Village?
I'm sorry?
Those standards were from the original plans for North Village?
They were granted as part of the original site plan for North Village.
Wasn't this a three-story building with 21 apartments at that time? Wasn't, it was never that when you, the original proposal?
That proposal was in 2019.
Under those standards?
The landscape standards are for the whole site, and they specify the type of trees and what you're supposed to do.
Oh, not from the original?
It's not from a layout. No, it was, it's written, just like an ordinance, this is the landscape standards.
You mentioned there was no EIS, and I understand there was one done at the beginning, roughly 10 years ago. Can you share with us, things could change in 10 years? And from other sources of data, NJDEP, this is still in a wellhead protection area, tier one, and also is mapped for an area with critical wildlife. So it has been 10 years, things could change in 10 years. And I saw your comments about this is between, it's in the middle of a highway and development. But, okay, it's not really a highway, and we all live, anybody who knows Sparta knows there's wildlife everywhere. So there is a potential that there is still wildlife there.
Wildlife living there, like?
Well, maybe now, I'm not sure about later, but.
In the middle of a pretty dense development, I don't see it as a very good wildlife habitat. I mean, maybe back, originally it was a cornfield, so it wasn't a great wildlife habitat then either. So there has been changes. I would say that, based on the status of what's gone on around it, the wildlife habitat has been reduced significantly and would not be, we're talking about one acre here, so.
Ask our professionals, is there any reason for concern or any reason why we would want to see if an EIS shows something different than it did 10 years ago?
I think in this particular case, those are all good questions. I think the main items that would be addressed in an EIS, from my standpoint, if I was reviewing it, number one, how are they handling the stormwater? And again, they're bringing the stormwater generally towards the front of the property in an infiltration basin. So you do have maintaining the stormwater basically on-site. You do have some infiltration, and there's some sand areas, I believe, in those infiltration basin for water quality. So for stormwater, that component, they are being addressed. And the one comment that I had that they have to still do, unless they can show me that it was covered in an original document, was the operation and maintenance manual, which basically calls for that area to be maintained. So that addresses the stormwater component. With regards to water, they are connecting on to the township's water system. So they're not drilling any additional well that would lead itself to any potential pollution right in that area. And in fact, they are near, if not in, the Wellhead Protection Act area. And normally, one of the conditions that we suggest get put in the resolution is that they're not using any hazardous chemicals, and also that there's no floor drains, in this case, that could discharge to the sewer system. So that's taken care of, and I don't think they'd have any problem with that.
I mean, there's floor drains.
Other than in the bathroom.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but there's no floor drains as far as like a mechanic shop or something like that. And the sewage is in fact sent over to the sewage treatment plant, where it's under the auspices of the DEP as far as the operation and monthly reports and meeting their quality standards for the Treatment Works approval. In addition to that, plus that water is in turn discharged back into the groundwater, so there's recharge that way. With regards to wet water, that sewer. With regards to wetlands or transition areas, I was out to the site. I did not notice any wetlands. I don't think the infiltration basin on the front of the property qualifies as a wetland, it's a man-made feature. So I think over time, basically, you've got an existing lot that today, if you went out there, it's primarily, and it's shown on that drone photo, it's basically a grass area. So I didn't see any pockets of wetlands, I didn't see any. And I don't believe, because of the development on each side, that there's any kind of transition area that comes into play. With regards to air quality and what have you, I'm sure when they get, especially with the Chipotle, when they get the permits for their kitchen equipment and what have you, whatever permit they need for air quality from running their equipment through the Board of Health and the County Health Department, they'll have to obtain that. And those are the main items, I think, that I would have looked for in an environmental impact statement in this particular case.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mrs. Simmons, I appreciate it.
And with regards to the other point, light pollution. I think you were right to point out, to make sure the fixtures are downward pointing, which I believe they are. The only question, again, when Mr. Wolverton comes up to talk about the architectural plans, again, I think it's important to see if the representation in the photo shop drawing of the proposed building, that that's in fact what they're talking about doing.
Since you mentioned lighting, the lighting proposal says that the lights will be dimmed, but on all night between dusk and dawn. Is that consistent across all of North Village, all the commercial properties?
Correct.
Okay, and the parking light?
The parking lot lights.
Yeah, those are the ones.
We don't dim the streetlights, we just dim.
What about the building signage, building lights?
Signage will probably go off, the building lights that are, they'll most likely be off. So I would think that the ones on the rear of the building would stay on for security, so people could get access to those doors if there was an emergency.
Okay. Okay, I'll reserve more questions on that till later. Thank you.
I do have a problem with you just taking this area and saying that it almost deserves to be developed because 40-plus acres of critical wildlife habitat that were documented has been paved over with 60% impermeable surface. To me, when I think about that, I think about a grove of giant sequoias. They're all cut down except for one tree. So what are you going to do, you're going to cut that one down too? So this is our last precious little critical habitat left from the North Village. And now what we're going to be doing is many different things. We're going to be causing a lot of traffic, more traffic. to be causing a lot of traffic, more traffic, more pollution. Where is the traffic going to be? It's going to be going down that Market Street and up that North Village, right? And that's right against the Chelsea, where people have memory problems and often get lost. And it's right up against affordable housing, where little kids are running around with starter homes right there, okay? And the light pollution that's coming at them. So it's very concerning to me that this parcel, this remaining parcel, is being treated, not to the advantage of the citizens in Sparta at all, but it's, again, being, everything is approved, and it's going forward, but I don't think it's a good fit for this particular parcel being there on the corner right across from Starbucks and on 15.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, but just to be clear, this isn't a precious little lot that had public use with the last remaining sequoia. This is part of a larger development where the developer is following the rules, has previous approvals, and has previous approvals for something substantially larger. And if the approval authorities at the time had thought that this was a precious lot that needed to be preserved, that could have been part of the original proposal, and it wasn't. So the developer is here proposing something according to the rules, and the approvals, and something significantly less impactful on height, light, activity than what was previously approved.
Right.
So I respect your comments, I just want to, just want to, just, you know, balance the thought, that's all.
And I do understand everything that you are doing is by the books and completely legal, but that doesn't make it morally responsible.
Question, and I may have missed it in the previous conversations, what was the economic value back to Sparta in regards to number of jobs, tax ratables, et cetera? Did you all present that data?
We presented it when we did the original, sorry, we did present that when we did the original application. It was to the tune of $2 million a year, if I recall.
In tax revenue.
Additional sales tax revenue generated and...
Not sales tax.
Yeah, real estate taxes.
Well, that's under a sales tax incentive program right now, is it not, for a certain amount of time?
No, we, no, we did not get any.
You didn't get any relief from the state?
No.
Then the ratables would just be your standard.
Yeah, so we've been, most towns we go to, they offer us pilots and, you know, alternatives to help with the taxes.
So you recall it was somewhere of about a $2 million benefit to the township?
I mean, if you look at your tax bill in Sparta, the last couple of years, they haven't gone up, and this is why.
The taxes have gone up.
Not significant, I mean, they would have been up a lot more.
What point is, when you say the $2 million ratable, is this property owned or all of North Village?
All of North Village.
$2 million in revenue, not ratable.
Let me try to make a suggestion if I can again, so I know we wanted to give the professionals a chance to get their questions out, so Dave, appreciate what you've done. Catherine, do you want to go through your questions, or would you prefer that Mr. Wolverton present his package first?
I'll go through mine quickly.
Okay.
I think I have less than Dave. And I appreciate that Mr. Dykstra and their group did address many, if not all, of the questions I had in my review memo. I apologize at the last meeting that it came in at the last hour, but I do appreciate that since then, those questions have been addressed. For one, they have addressed the front yard setback that was identified for 100 feet, they moved the building back from Route 15 to 100 feet, so relieving any variance relief that was required. They have provided that the outdoor dining, it's a conditional use in the zone or in the transect, and they did provide on the cover sheet that all of the conditions are being complied with, so essentially making it permitted, and addressed that it is associated directly with the Chipotle, which was one of the conditions. They updated the parking requirement based on the number of seats, and I just had a question, was that, was the 52 seats that the parking was updated based on, was that a cumulative count from the indoor and outdoor, or just the indoor?
Both.
Both, okay, so obviously outdoor dining during the winter months is going to be less, so they're, you know, during those months, there'll be a little bit excess of parking, which is fine, and then during the months when the outdoor dining is used, obviously they'll be, they'll have the parking that was necessary. The signage requirements were provided on the front sheet of the plan as well, there were some questions, because no dimensions were provided on the plans initially, but they have addressed that to show that the signage is in compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. What I would ask is, I know there have been a lot of questions about the access easement, the police department did have questions. What I would provide is a copy of the access easement, as Mr. Simmons said, he's requesting at least, you know, a copy on the deed book page to make sure that it was recorded. I'm not sure that the police department was aware or is aware that there's an access easement recorded there. I'm not saying it will totally alleviate their concerns, but if they have a chance to read through that, it may be helpful to better understand that. And I don't know if that will need to be amended at all to potentially limit it to service vehicles only. I haven't, you know, I don't have a copy of it, so I don't know what it says, but there might be a chance for that, to alleviate their concerns further. And I don't know if you know the history behind when that was recorded. Was it recorded when the Chelsea was developed?
The Chelsea was developed, this access point was part of the original North Village development.
Yes.
And the lots were split here.
Okay.
And it was supposed to both have access, and that was another access to Route 15 for the whole site.
Okay.
Remove the property line, and that access, part of the original approval.
Uh huh.
Its access.
So the Chelsea is fully aware that the access easement exists, obviously, because they were, you know, part and parcel to it. So, you know, like I said, I think it might alleviate some of the police department's concern, just if they know that, from a safety perspective, I know that they brought up some concerns about, you know, other vehicles entering the site and potential safety issues with the Chelsea, so hopefully that will be helpful to them. The EVSC space, make-ready spaces were shown on the site, and, oh, the only, the last question I had, and I don't think this was, this was what was amended on the plans, but I did want to discuss it, was, oh, also, the drive-through parking spaces and the pickup spaces adjacent to the food dumpster, I requested that there be signage shown, which was the details were provided on sheet three of the plans, to show those signs, which was great, thank you. What I would suggest, or what was recommended in the memo, was that there are a few pedestrian connections throughout the site at, you know, pretty significant intersections as far as the site circulation. I think the top part, maybe less so, but there are residents in the developments, so the top pedestrian connection, crosswalk across the parking lot, is, yes, is less significant, but the one adjacent to the patio area, yes, there's going to be cars that are leaving from just picking up their, sorry, from just picking up their food, or driving in, or stopping, there's the two online order pickup, meaning they're going to park their car and probably walk inside. And so I would just suggest that either, you know, a thick layer of the thermoplastic paint be used to really provide some friction to, for drivers to really feel it and see it, or using a different material such as bricks or pavers to kind of provide a little bit more distinction in the crosswalk area, because I do think that that's going to be the utmost importance for safety, as far as people going back and forth a lot. I wouldn't, I thought about potentially suggesting that those drive-through order spaces be moved to the front, but it really doesn't make a difference, there's so many people moving across that part, that kind of connection right there, and I think it's going to be any kind of marking on the pavement, you don't want to make it too crazy with signage and, you know, freestanding signs and things, but I think if you do on-the-ground marking, whether, like I said, that thermoplastic plate paint in a thick layer, or even brick pavers, that's just my suggestion for a safety standpoint.
You could definitely do the thermoplastic. Just because of maintenance.
Yeah, I know, they can be a pain with snowplows and things ripping them out, so anything that can be done, you know, I think that would be helpful. The...
So just, I want to understand, so there is agreement that the will, that the crosswalk will be modified to, what are the right words there, just to capture it?
I, my recommendation, and it seems like Mr. Dykstra is amenable to it, is to use thermoplastic paint, which is, you know, it's very thick layer paint, so normal crosswalk painting might just be like a thin visual layer, but the thermoplastic will provide, you know, not a speed bump of any sort, but it will still provide some definition that if a car went over it, they'd feel a little different, and then also pedestrians, so it's a little bit more visible.
And it lasts a lot longer, so it's much more visible.
You mentioned speed bump a few times, would a minor speed bump just preceding that, I mean, that would slow cars down that are speeding off?
I'm not a fan of speed bumps and speed humps, only because they can, from a snowplow perspective, they can get damaged, and then you don't know what kind of, you know, material's going to come off of there. I really do think thermoplastic paintings, they use them for mid-block crosswalks, too, so it's helpful, and it also is usually reflective of some sort, so, you know, thermoplastic paint is a great, a great alternative to doing like a speed hump, or doing a brick paver or something like that. And maintenance perspective, it is very, very easy to maintain, no issues usually with snowplows and things like that, so that's, that's why I made the suggestion.
Any other suggestions that we want to capture?
Oh, no, the only other, the only other comment I had based on the landscaping was that, and I didn't have a chance to look through the, I know the landscaping plan looks like it was updated, I didn't see anything that stood out to me, but I would suggest that if the landscaping plan's being updated at all, that only New Jersey native species be used, they're generally more robust, and, you know, I, you know, any landscaping that's foreign is usually, I suggest that it be, it be switched to a New Jersey native alternative. But I haven't taken a look through, I'll provide any comments with that.
We'll consider that, I don't, like, we have a lot of trouble finding landscaping material that's native to New Jersey.
Okay.
So when you go to buy it, you can't get it.
Okay.
Especially when you want larger trees and things, so.
Okay, I'll take a look at the list, sure.
It's a balance.
Thank you, that's all I have.
One question about an item in your report, 8A, it mentions recommending using signage to limit or discourage car idling in the spaces to reduce unnecessary emissions adjacent to the outdoor patio.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, I think one sign will probably suffice, you could probably put it adjacent to the freestanding signs for the online order pickup, my only, that suggestion was put in there from a basis of, sometimes people will get their food delivered and then sit in their car, so it'll not only, you know, free up spaces and allow for turnover, but will also make sure that no one is idling. I think there are DEP standards that you can cite on there, on that signage.
Okay, would it make sense to let Mr. Wolverton give his presentation, that may have answered some questions that, and then come to bring it back to the ZIS for just general questions, which Mr. Dykstra, this may be available to answer?
Yes.
Or is there any questions that someone feels they'd like to get out at this point before we move on?
Just have two quick questions, if you don't mind. Are any of the parking spaces going to be designed for employee only? Was there any consideration of opening like a walkway, so if you were going to go from Starbucks and cross the street to this?
There's no sidewalk coming up North Village on either side, the connectivity is that Market Street.
But in between the Starbucks and the Jersey mics, there are sidewalks along that side?
Correct.
But there's no, so...
Sidewalk starts here, and it goes to the side.
But you're, there's a crosswalk there.
There's a crosswalk here, yes.
That's all the way by the other burrito place.
No, that's, that's on the corner of the Starbucks.
Starbucks.
At the intersection here, across here.
Oh, okay.
That's the only point, there's, yeah, there's none down here, down North Boulevard.
There's shown, the sidewalk crosses here, Starbucks, other places, other entrance you were talking about was down there.
While you have that up, the lights and the garbage for the other two buildings are going to be in that corner where the pavement is?
This is, this was when the construction, that's what you're talking about, that pavement?
I'm just asking if that's where the garbage for that?
The garbage is in this corner.
Very close to that, other, was there any reason why you put it there on the other side, like the other, like where the Chipotle garbage is going?
It was all about access with the trucks and what have you, so it was set up and access to the service doors.
Yeah.
The mic, is that a live mic on the table, would that be easier? Does that feed into these systems?
I think that just records.
It will work. You can use that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, this is close to the service doors for trash and things. It's not at the corner of that, the corner of that parking lot, it's up here.
Any brothers have any questions before?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wolverton has testified before this board, I don't know exactly how many times, would you like me to elicit some of his qualifications for the board?
I would like that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it, I apologize, probably would be, I agree.
Mr. Wolverton, if you could tell the board, what's your highest level of education?
I graduated from the Polytechnic Institute in 2008 with a Bachelor of Architecture degree.
And you're, what professional licenses do you hold in New Jersey?
I hold license to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey, received it in 2013.
And it's currently valid?
That is correct.
And you're a principal with the firm of HQW?
That is correct.
And would you just tell the board generally what HQW does in the architectural space?
Sure, even as a history, I joined HQW in 2006 as an intern in college. I continued my mentorship at HQW after college, became a designer, project manager, received my architectural license, and became partner in 2015. We are a very diverse portfolio, commercial is one of them, we're also architect of record for several towns, local school districts, and colleges as well.
And you've testified before planning boards and Board of Adjustments in the past?
That is correct.
Approximately how many times?
Over 2,000.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Brady, is that sufficient to...
I have no questions, Mr. Wolverton served as an expert in the case I handled, so.
Any concerns?
Okay, we're good, thank you.
Mr. Wolverton, as you've heard, the board, the board has had the benefit of the background of the existing site and what's proposed, so if you could give an overview of the architecture of the building that's proposed as depicted on the site plan, let's start there.
Sure, yeah, so what I have here is the sheet A1 that was submitted as part of the project application. It depicts the floor plan as well as the elevations. To orient everyone, Route 15 would be on the left-hand side of the plan, North Village Boulevard along the bottom of the plan, and that would be the entrance into the suites. This label here, Cypress Lane, it's actually Market Street, that's labeled incorrectly, but along the top of the plan, that's where the Chelsea would be located, so the Chelsea would be located in this location here, just to orient everybody. The entry, the front of the building per se is along North Village Boulevard, where the entrance to Suite A, which would be the anchor tenant of Chipotle, is located, as well as Suite B and Suite C. There are, as Owen indicated, there are three separate suites, Suite A is about 2,500 square feet, Suite B is about 1,600 square feet, as well as Suite C, there's a utility space as well that provides access to the roof, as well as utilities entering the building. The floor, the sheet also depicts... The floor, the sheet also depicts the different elevations, so the top-left elevation, that's your view from Route 15, where we have, we'll go into the finishes in a moment, but we have the drive-up pickup window, as well as the building signage. The top-right is the view from the North Village Boulevard, where we have the entrance to Suite A, Suite B, and Suite C. And this building is viewed from all angles, so we continue the materials all the way around the building, and the bottom-left elevation is the elevation when you're driving off of Market Street. And the final elevation on the bottom-right, that's your view from the Chelsea side, where we have our access into the various suites, as well as the, the utility room on the, on the side. So, that kind of takes care of the plans and elevations. Further, what we can see on the plan, you know, it's easy to just design a box, we wanted to articulate the facade a little bit. Instead of one monotonous building, we bring the facade both in and out, all the way around the building, to create some interest. We also do that on the building elevations, where the parapets pop up and pop down. And the parapets vary from 21 feet to 19 feet, with the, actually roof plan around 15, so that gives about five to six feet worth of, worth of building to hide all the HVAC units that are going to be on the roof. In addition, on the elevations, what you'll see are the canopies, there's a series of canopies over the front entrances, both provide weather protection, as well as, you know, pedestrian instruction on where those, the entrances are. Those canopies would have downlighting in them as well, to further light the front entrances. The elevations, or the, actually, so the building signage, there's four signs. These, the, the letters would be backlit, all the signs are three feet tall or less, and the Chipotle signs are three feet tall by 15 foot four tall, wide. All the signs are compliant with the ordinance, which is three feet tall, and none of them are more than 90% of the length of facade. In addition, what else are we talking about? I think, looking at the elevations, you'll see a, a light material, as well as a darker material. We're using two different. I have samples here, if we could do these in the.
Mr. Brady, do?
We're going to make reference to samples, do you want us to somehow mark the samples?
Yeah, it would be good if we could, do you want to mark them as one group, or?
I think as one group would be best.
So, I guess that'll be A3?
That would be A3.
Mr. Wolverton, once you're done marking them, maybe you can identify what, which each material is?
Sure, so what I'm marking here is a very durable aluminum material, it's about 16-inch thick, and has a silk screen of a wood grain, as well as a, a wood tone on them. It comes in long panels, and they are clipped together and fastened to the building, creating a rain screen on the building. What we're proposing are two different colors, a, a light tone, which would be the whitest color on the elevations, and it's called Light Fir. And then we're also presenting a darker tone, where you see the darker material on the facade, and that would be the, the burnt cherry look. So, we have samples of the actual materials highlighted in red, as well as a, a full-size sample of the material that we're looking to use on the, on the elevations.
What was the first material, what was it called?
It was called Light Fir, F-I-R. And then Burnt Cherry. I've also provided a photorealistic colored elevation, this would be labeled as A4. And this is a view of the building from the intersection of North Village Boulevard and Market Street. You'll see that, we, we see the Chipotle built tenant suite on the left-hand side, with the canopy and entrance in, and Suite B and C. You'll also see a corner of the dumpster and the Chelsea, beyond, dumpster enclosure and the Chelsea beyond. And further, I brought a dusk rendition of the, of the rendering, this would be labeled as A5. And this depicts a, a realistic view of what is envisioned for the building at night or at dusk, where the, the signs, the letter would be backlit, as well as we have the lighting in the canopies. And to further accent the building, we are proposing and including lighting on the light, Light Fir aluminum panels, just to accent the wood panels. It would start off as a, it would fade out by the time you get to the top of the parapets. So, we're not providing additional light, uplighting, it's more of an accent on the building. You'll also see the, the seating that's outside Chipotle as well. I think.
Mr. Wolverton, one of the inquiries from Mr. Simmons was to confirm that no sprinklers were required for this building?
Sure, that's correct, so based on the size of the building and the construction type, which is a, a type 2, 2B construction, steel frame, metal studs, sprinklers are not required, there'll be a two-hour firewall between tenant suites.
Mr. Chairman, does the board have any questions, or want to direct Mr. Wolverton to any specific further areas of testimony?
Let me just, if I can, let me just ask the professionals, is there anything that you heard that weren't any questions from, from either of you?
Mr. Chairman, the, the only item that I had, which Mr. Wolverton alluded to, was in the representation on exhibit A5, A5 that we're looking at now. I just wanted to make sure, because that was one of my comments, that the lighting that's depicted on there is, in fact, what they're proposing to do, mainly accent lighting.
The owner's adamant about having that accent lighting.
That was the question I had for Mr. Wolverton.
And that's compliant with, with the ordinances?
The, the lighting plan that Mr. Dykstra provided basically showed the isolux values based on just the parking lot lightings, I would stand corrected, and he can confirm it if he comes back up, that the lighting that's shown for the accent did not contribute to the light values that he showed on his lighting plan. This is mainly for accent lighting.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only comment, Mr. Chairman.
Before I bring back the, the board, you know, Catherine, any additional questions on your part?
I just had a question, the two, the lighting above the patio area, is that shown on the plans? Those two fixtures that they have proposed? Is it that way, or are they just?
There's no like that.
Okay. The one that closes to the door looks like it might be obstructive. I think the, the one fixture closest to the building, along the patio area, looked like it might get in the way.
So, those are?
So, those are not proposed, correct?
No, that's.
Okay, I don't think they're, they're probably not necessary. So, I just wanted to make that clear. That's all I had.
All right, at this point, let's bring it back to the, to the board, anybody has any questions, maybe we'll start down at the far right. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I got one question, one comment. One was, you're talking about the, the signage, since the, this North Village is signed on to having Title 39 enforced on the, on the properties there, that would be in all the signs, would be in conformance with the manual and uniform traffic control, correct? So.
We use the MUTCD.
Yeah, MUTCD, conforming signs, so, that's it, all right. And then, and the other comment I had, and I'm, I'm looking at it, and I was a traffic guy myself, I'm, I'm looking at, from the fire department perspective, I, I think that's a positive, that, that access road, because the worst thing in the world is to have a fire truck come in and then have to either back up or turn around in the parking lot. At least they can, they can go in and drive through. You know, that was, that was my comment on it. Thank you.
Can you describe the fencing around the patio area? I know that's depicted, there wasn't a lot of detail that I saw around the fencing.
It's a wrought iron type metal fence, it's actually aluminum, but it looks like wrought iron fence.
How high?
About a foot high.
How, is that rated, or is that?
It's industrial grade is what we use on these type of facilities, so it's designed for, there's many levels, but that's the highest level fence you can buy, from a strength perspective.
What does that mean in terms of a vehicle accidentally accelerating or backing up when people are sitting there?
It won't stop a vehicle.
Won't stop a vehicle. It just seems that the patio area is in the middle of lots of vehicle movement.
That's correct.
Are there any alternatives to make that safer?
I think it's a, I mean, it's a slow traffic area, I mean, we have the same situation at the Starbucks across the street, and it works well there, so I don't see it as an issue.
Cars from the Starbucks. It's, yeah, the, the drive-thru is on the opposite side of where the Patriots.
The drive-thru comes through, past the patio sits here.
You have to make, you have to come out of that drive-thru and then make a left, and there's parking, there's car, there's a parking space there. There's multiple parking spaces.
This is their, right along this whole front is their, their fence.
That's the entrance way, the patio where you could sit is more toward the right.
There's another patio over here, but this is where they have their outdoor seating right in front.
No, it's not, their outdoor seating is to the, is when you, if you leave Starbucks, to the, out to the left. There's four tables there, and it's away from where the drive-thru is.
There's tables, and they're shown, but.
Not set up that way.
They have the same fence there, at that corner.
So, can you describe the building appearance? Nice, nice job, by the way. Can you describe how it compares to the nearby, the surrounding buildings? I know in the initial Resolution 674, it was intended to be brick and cleperd to complement Chelsea and the buildings across the street from it, and perhaps the townhouses. Can you describe how this design compares to the surrounding buildings, specifically Chelsea and townhouses and Starbucks, et cetera?
Sure, I mean, well, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at the architectural landscaping standards that were submitted as part of the original North Village application. Number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, so six states' finishes of buildings shall be similar in quality through development. A tasteful mixture of finishes and colors is encouraged to prevent each building from looking exactly alike. So, you could see throughout the buildings, between the ShopRite, Industry, the building that Atlantic Health is in, that there's a, there's a plethora of different styles, but all of them have, like, an earth-tone feel to them, and even Industry has a metal-clad siding on it, so it was really meant to kind of create a family of buildings in the area, and kind of play off the modern look of Industry.
And everything else, brick? What is it?
The Atlantic Health building is clapboard and stone. Then the next building is brick, then Industry is metal and brick. Starbucks is stucco, stone, and brick. And this one will be?
I'm hearing a lot of brick reoccurring themes there, though, this has zero brick.
It's not required to have brick.
Hey, it just, but it, I think the question was about how?
They intentionally selected different materials throughout the buildings to create not a traditional strip mall-type center. I think this is what makes North Village, North Village. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, it does. What will, what will residents in those townhouses see, and what will residents in Chelsea see? Because this is, no matter how you slice and dice it, this is also residential neighborhood, you have a lot of people who live right here. So, what will they see and what will they hear from the backside, so the, the Chelsea side and the townhouse side?
So, this, so A4 depicts the side facing the townhouses. So, on that side, Suite C has a storefront and canopy, and then a blank facade. So, on this side, all they're going to have is the drive-thru, the dumpster enclosure, and a storefront. So, no noises except for the dumpster late morning. On the.
Excuse me, that, that dumpster, that storage area, the waste storage, that'll be screened and vegetation surrounding it thoroughly, like the front one you mentioned, okay?
Then I guess A, A6. She wanted to pass this down. So, A6, as it comes down, is a, is a representation of what the building looks like from the Route 15 corridor, with the Chelsea being to our left? And we continue those materials all the way around the building, so we have the light tone aluminum siding, as well as the dark tone canopies that protect the service entrances, and then the doorways in. So, really not much additional noise, and we continue the same materials all the way around the building, because, like I originally said, there's no front, there's no rear of this building, we treat those materials all the way around it.
The service entrances appear to have glass doors, is that accurate?
That's not accurate.
They're going to be metal, probably, right? And they'll, I mean, I would recommend that you make them, if you could keep that window on the top, that'd be great. But otherwise, recommend it to match the color of the aluminum.
Yes, they'll blend in, they'll blend in.
Yeah.
Would you be able to share that with the public, if they see them stretching their necks right now, and?
Sure.
Think it'll save some time.
Is there an opportunity to put more trees and shrubbery and greenery on the Chelsea side of the building?
Let me give that a look.
What's, what landscape does the Chelsea have on that side, to add to that question? Do they have any landscaping right now on that road going in?
The property line is the curb.
So, okay.
So, we're providing.
So, the landscaping is shown here, correct, on the, on the, on the 3D rendering? There's some shade, there's some trees. You, you want us to come back here? That's probably accurate, what your legislature's plan shows.
That's right?
Actually, it's actually, there's more vegetation in that than on here.
Yeah, there's. I mean, we can add some vegetation there, if it's important, and we can work with.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm looking at this drawing here, I mean, am I looking at the moment the two people standing in the area? I, I think you would, I would recommend, Dean, I don't know where,
Yeah.
or Catherine would recommend, or Mr. Simmons as well, a little bit more landscape break, uh, breakpoint on that.
Do you have the width of that grass area between the driveway and the property line?
Yes.
I just worry that you won't have enough for tree.
15 feet?
That's just enough room for, you know, a, a good-sized tree planting. I would recommend that maybe you supplement, I mean, how far apart are the trees right now, they're about 15 feet or 20 feet on center?
The big ones are about two feet on center.
Okay. So, I mean, you could, we could change the tree, you could change tree planting to something that will have a little bit more growth, maybe even throw in, like, a Green Giant in there, an Arborvit, just to keep, you know, year-round screening. But I think that's probably the most you can do, you don't want to space them too, too, too close together, because you will have probably some tree death, if you plant them too close together. But honestly, the Chelsea property went right up to the property without any green area, so it's, it's, you can do as much as you can, you don't have any others to help, but, like I said, you know, larger tree canopy and some Green Giants, I think, will help out.
Is that the only entrance for the Chelsea? Or do they have another entrance point?
Chelsea comes off of the highway.
But that's all they have?
Also from.
Oh, also from up there.
If I may just go back to the patio again, um, in terms of safety, I wonder if there's, you know how sometimes they've got like the big, uh, uh, planters that are, you know, made of some kind of concrete? But they look nice, but they can also create some kind of barrier, maybe something like that? That would be aesthetically nice, but also maybe add a layer of protection.
I think, well, the only thing that's going to stop a vehicle is a bollard that's dug into the ground, you know, four or five feet.
Or something like that. I mean, I was just thinking more aesthetically.
Bollards is going to take up less space. It's, you know, you're only talking about a.
Yeah, four inch, six inch diameter. You might want to put a bollard on the corner of the fencing or, you know, just outside of the fencing. There looked like there was a little space just where the backup area would be. Yeah, because that would save, if you put one or two bollards, you could do the width of a car and, you know, probably.
Something like that.
Yeah, it'll stop the fence from toppling if, um, if people were seated there and a, and a car did, you know, accidentally hit it.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
And Mr. Blumente, just as far as the landscaping, the, the Chelsea does have a three story exposure. So there's only so much you can do, you know, they're looking down no matter what. You can't plant like a forty foot tree there. So, um, this, I, I think the applicant sounds like they're going to agree to put a little bit more supplemental screening landscaping as much as they can.
Okay. So from the top stories of that residential building, will they be seeing the mechanical equipment on the roof?
Yes.
Is there a way to, well, any ideas or solutions on how to shield that, at least from that one side?
How I looked at it is if there was a three story building there, you wouldn't have any view beyond into the cornfields beyond or down fifteen. So I, I figured this was a better option to see a couple of mechanical units and still have a view.
Well, yeah, but we're not, that was back a while ago. Today we're talking about now.
Well, the options are, I mean, a lot of these mechanical units come in gray tone colors. TPO roofing that we're using comes in white, gray or tan. We could get a TPO roof that has, well, we could probably try and match the HVAC unit to the color of the roof. That's what I would suggest.
It would help, it would help. Okay, thank you.
I'm just having a little trouble orienting myself. Is this the service entrance right here? This coming with the Chelsea sign right there?
Yeah, these on the back, those are the service entrances into the.
No, the, I mean, from, from fifteen.
Yeah, this is fifteen.
So this, the car is on fifteen and then it's going to turn in this way, but the Chelsea sign.
That's just a architecture like renderers artistic, uh, lights. It wouldn't be traveling that direction now.
There should, and here would be a sign that said service entrance, right?
Right.
And the Chelsea sign would be over that a way towards Chelsea.
The Chelsea sign is at the intersection.
I mean, you do have some distance there, you know?
From Chelsea to that, like from the main entrance to Chelsea to.
Past this car is the service entrance over here behind the sign.
They come in the Chelsea.
Behind the out, there's a red, I'm sorry, there's a black sports car. The service entrance begins right behind the black sports car. The drive-in, driveway, I mean.
So this is fifteen. Yeah, make a way to go to Chelsea. This is Chelsea Park. All right, you can come in on this side of the building.
Right, and there's the patio. But where's the service?
See here, you can see it on, you can see it on here, but.
In public.
This is the Chelsea entrance.
I've got some questions.
These are those parts, you see parts. This is the service entrance, right?
Okay, so you actually have to go into the Chelsea area to access the service entrance.
Or they can come this way. They have an easement to be in this part. So either way, they're probably going to come in this way.
I have a question on, what is the projected traffic? Projected volume coming to this, this, well, not just Chipotle, but what are you expecting in terms of volume hourly, daily coming to this development, this, this piece of property in the future?
Um, we did not do an updated traffic study, um, and significantly less than what was proposed, so.
You, so you have, you have no, no current estimate though on how many vehicles per day will be expected here?
When we do something that's per ordinance, when we do a project that's per ordinance, the traffic is assumed to be, as long as you're not violating the ordinance, um, the traffic flow from that site is anticipated in the zoning. So we don't do a study typically.
Well, I'm sure Chipotle asked that question, right? I'm sure they wanted to estimate business volume, right?
Oh, you're talking about the traffic on the highway?
No, no, talk about visitors to the retail, to commercial spots and to Chipotle. So how many new vehicles per day?
No, no, Chipotle, Chipotle would do its demographic study on the, the traffic count on the highway.
I think the question, I mean, what, the amount of traffic or maybe it's not traffic, the, the flow was pre-calculated into the overall development? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And it's calculated into the number of parking spaces. That's why you have a parking space calculation in your ordinance so that it can handle the cars that circulate to that lot.
And when that was done, that was taken, this was taken into consideration when we did that analysis.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
But initially this was not meant to be reta, uh, a, a drive up pickup, was not supposed to be a restaurant, a fast food restaurant, right? Originally it was designed for something else.
We're not talking about the previous approval on this property. We're talking about your parking ordinance, which accommodates the projected number of cars.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about how many cars can park there. I'm concerned about cars coming through and going on the back street again by the townhouses on the residential street. How many cars an hour or a minute or a night they're going to see coming in past the townhouses? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a direct correlation, the, the way we see it, but, but we, we don't have that number.
Do you know if it's.
Would it be more than the originally proposed development for that? You said that was originally residential?
It was twenty-three apartments over retail.
And how many? How many apartments again?
Twenty-three apartments.
Yeah, twenty-three apartments with a percentage of retail kind of mixed into that, right?
Thirty-six hundred square foot of retail.
So based on that amount of projected volume, I guess to get to the point where compared to this one, is it a wash? Is it more or less kind of comparable?
You would have more trips from that.
In here?
No, from the original.
In the original.
Yeah, I'm good for now.
All right, um, a couple of questions myself. So when I look at the, the parking standard or the design standard, um, for commercial buildings, and I'm going to look to, to Dave and Catherine here, um, is there any concern with a front yard or side yard parking? I thought that was prohibited by, by ordinance for commercial buildings and the design standards.
It's not permitted, it's not prohibited in this zone.
I'm sorry?
It's not prohibited in this zone.
And, and this what? When I looked at the zone, it referred back to the design standard, I believe, um, where, where it was prohibited. So I'm looking for, uh.
I'd have to check that.
Okay, I'd like, like to have that checked, please.
Yep.
And it, what I'm referring to is, uh, eighteen, five, three, I think it was H.
H is usually the part.
Okay. In regard to, in regard to the fence, um, there is a design standard for, for fencing that I don't see was, um, described or detailed in the application. Um, could you comment on that?
The design of the fences incorporated in the plans.
Right, but so what I saw, what I didn't see, maybe I missed it, I apologize if I did, is I saw where there's a fence, where a fence is going to be, but I didn't see height or anything like that. Just there's going to be a fence there.
It's on the detail sheet.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great, thanks. We talked about the ordering board, talked about that. So relative to the, to the architectural plans, so, you know, like others up here, you know, when I went back and looked at the different, different site plans, it, it talked about clapboard and, and brick. And I'm questioning, I, I didn't see, there's also a developer's agreement in place, which talks about having a harmonized look. And it says you cannot divert from that without going back and having, um, that developer's agreement redone. So any thoughts from our professionals on, on that?
What developer's agreement are you referring to?
I'm sorry?
What, what developer's agreement?
So didn't the, there was a developer's agreement for all of North Village?
Oh, I'm just asking if you have the.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have it, no.
Oh, I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't read a copy of it. Um, if it was specifically for parcel J for the last approval, then that's a different story. But if it's for entirety.
I think it was for entirety.
For North Village. So, um, with, with the North Village Plan Unit Development, the standards for architecture are, are pretty flexible. They make, the standards in the zoning ordinance for, for this area were intentionally flexible because they created the transect areas. As far as the architectural, um, cohesiveness, architectural, you know, uh, cooperation between the buildings, the, the applicant has put forth a design that they feel, you know, is complimentary, they feel, um, you know, meets those, that very flexible standard. I have heard that the board members are, you know, there's been a couple of board members bringing up discussions. Now, I don't think the board can redesign the building, but I think there can be suggestions or recommendations to incorporate certain materials within the design of the building. From a perspective of a, of a permitted use, and I'll let Mr. Brady handle anything like that. You can't, I don't think that this board can say, you know, can deny this application based on the architectural design, but they can say that they believe that this building is not complimentary and make recommendations to the applicant to incorporate specific building materials or specific recommendations as far as what they believe the North Village architectural and if they do or do not, uh, comply with it.
So when I, when I, when I looked at site plan six seventy-four, um, I believe Mr. Dykstra agreed at that time that the J building will have brick to complement what was the Modern Farmer at the time and clapboard to complement the Chelsea. And that was, that's what was approved. So what I'm seeing here is different than, than that. So, so my, my question is, based on what was approved, should there not be, in my view, there should be, uh, brick to, to tie in with the other buildings as well as some clapboard?
Well, I, I feel like the real question is, six, application number six seventy-four was, was an approval for it and for the twenty-three apartments retail use. That's a different story. The, as far as the architectural standards, and I didn't have this application to review it, but Mr. Dykstra may have been a part of it to say so, to, to provide some details on it, is application number six fourteen is what set forth the landscape and architectural standards. I believe in my memo, I, I asked if those, if you could, you know.
So under six, under six fourteen, under six fourteen, it reads all other buildings are brick and clapboard to complement the Chelsea.
Okay.
That's six seven four.
Uh, six, uh, six one four, I believe.
Well, to further ask while you look that up, is there anything you can do with the current, um, design to incorporate some type of brick?
I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Dykstra, the, the architect, answer it, but, but, you know, if you listen to what the testimony was, the, the Atlantic Building is metal.
I, I don't think that's accurate.
Not metal, it's.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
That's brick. Atlantic Building was brick, you said.
Atlantic Building is not brick. It's stone and hardy board.
Okay, so let's, let's loosen this a little bit because I hear where you're going with this. Whether it's stone or brick like type of feature into this.
Right, but then the next building is brick, but then you have industry that is more consistent with this building. Then you have the Starbucks, then you have this building. The, the drawing of the comparison between, at the time, the, the Chelsea was up and this was proposed to be residential, you could understand tying it together. It was a three story building. It would stand next to a three story building. You could understand tying it together.
We, we understand. Well, I think if you look at industry, you're just telling us industry is built of what?
It's brick and.
It is brick. There's a lot of brick, as much as there is the glass and. Metal structures. There is a brick tone, a brick, uh, brick incorporated into that. I think, I think where I'm hearing and then others are saying, they'd like to see some consistency or something of the like incorporated into this design? If it's, if it makes sound, I mean, I mean, putting what together, what you put here.
I, I think.
You meet, you check the boxes, right? You meet all your checklist, but again, I think it's an aesthetics conversation we're having.
I, I think it, the building is designed using this material with the undulations of the parapets and ins and outs that incorporating brick into this particular design would be difficult. Um, it would have to go back to the drawing board.
May I ask if, um, if the architectural were driven by, by Chipotle corporately? Because the design is common in other Chipotles, so didn't, is Chipotle, does that impact the design?
I would say a lot of Chipotles have a, a larger element at the top where their sign is located. This building has something similar, but did the two influence each other? It wasn't my, that wasn't the intent.
And the color of the dark, uh, wood fil screen, aluminum panel, what color was that?
It's burnt cherry.
Burnt cherry. So there is like a red undertone, almost like. It's, it's darker than that, okay.
Mr. Wolf.
On the Atlantic Building, it's brick and stone.
Mr. Wolf, you said in your report that the building is designed into Chipotle style.
Yeah.
Is that number, on number, under number ten?
What I said was it wasn't, it's designed in the style, but it wasn't my intent where it's designed in the building. I know.
Did we know the.
You meant, you meant destruction, the upper panel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we had a similar looking Chipotle. That's kind of what we looked at when we looked at this building. We felt it was, uh, an architectural feature to add to the village. That's kind of how we look at it.
And that later colors aluminum, it's metal?
All of it's metal. Just for maintenance purposes, it, it stays. It's a, a really nice product.
Let me, let me read one, one thing if I can from the ordinance and I'll ask your opinion and then we can move on. But when I look at the required conditions for plan development, um, approved unified architectural and, uh, design schemes should be complied with by the applicant in future development. So it's already saying unified architectural and design schemes throughout the plan development, which to me is the entire North Village, right? So this, when I look at this design, I'm not seeing the unification with the other building. So please help me understand that.
When we came back, that was the original, the way it was written in the ordinance.
Right.
We came in with an application to, to develop the architectural design standards farther. So we'd have flexibility in how these buildings looked and the ability to, to make them different. So we didn't want, um, a lot of these shopping centers, you see, the buildings are all exactly the same. They have no character.
If, if I had to say how they're similar to the rest of the buildings, a lot of the buildings have a metal canopy out front. In fact, the Atlantic Health one does, the building that has Playables and Saladworks has these metal canopies out front as well as the thing Starbucks does. The, a lot of the, the black tone of the building and the storefront, the storefront reminiscent of almost all the buildings going along, um, the parking lot side where Pizza One is. The, the black facade here is reminiscent of, uh, the dark materials of, of industry, a lot of that. And then in addition to that, the, the, um, the land, the, the design standards said to bring in some earth tones. So in addition to that, we wanted to complement with some wood tones because this is Sussex County. We wanted to bring in some of that, the biophilia, the, the wood tones, but with a durable material. And that's where the lighter tone came from. And it just so happened that the same manufacturer has a very, has a darker tone as well. So we wanted to treat the whole building like that. Um, the material goes all the way to the ground. So we wanted to choose a material that was very durable, durable at all the way around the building, whether it's assault or to employees at the, at the exit. So we brought in elements, they're all complimentary. The style's a bit different, a little bit more modern. And to your point, a lot of Chipotles and storefronts do have a, a larger element that wraps, that could be lit and put the signage on.
All right, I'll, I'll just leave it. I, I'd like to see more brick. Um, just again, I think it ties in with the intent of the North Village was. The North Village Plan Development, I understand Chipotle maybe has something, but maybe the other two, uh, just for your consideration. I understand Chipotle maybe has something, but maybe the other two, just for your consideration. Okay? Let's see. So, signage, you know, Dave, you talked about this a little bit. So, typically, when I look at a site plan, there's a signed plan within the site plan that gives all the dimensions, the colors, the sizes, and that kind of stuff. I didn't see that here, did I miss that, or?
No, I think, Mr. Chairman, what they did in this particular application, at least in the later plans and some of the information in the architectural memo that Mr. Wolverton provided, they did have more detail on the Chipotle sign.
Right.
As far as the colors and the size and what have you. But, my understanding is for proposed suite B and C, they don't know the tenant yet, or if it might be a single tenant, singular, and what the signage details are going to be. Basically, what they outlined in the response was that the height would be no more than three feet, which is what is allowed, and the distance of the length of this each sign along the facade would be no lo, no more than 90% of the facade width, so they'd be within the ordinance. That's not to say, and I don't mean to speak for them, but that's not to say it necessarily will be that big, but those are the outer limits of what they're proposing. I, I would think that something like that, if the board were to consider it, would be signage to come back before the site plan review committee, just so you can see what it is.
You guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, we talked about the color. So, traffic circulation, could you go back to the, the drawing that has the traffic circulation? So, there was a revised letter from Corporal Morris dated September 22nd. And the conclusion that he came with is that if the entrance or the exit from Lot 7 is allowed, as shown in the plans, it's, it's in his professional opinion that it will have traffic and public safety concerns for residents and employees of Chelsea. I, I need to address that somehow, I, you know, I'm hesitant to say, ignore it, so.
I think we did address it. By limiting it to just service vehicles, it's very few vehicles coming through there, and they're controlled.
And I think this, this was the plan that, I, I don't know for sure about it. He had seen the revised plans, I think this memo was in response to the revised plan, where afterward, it had been, already been revised, you know, to, to limit it.
Correct.
So, so he still has a concern in my mind.
He does.
Okay, can you agree with that?
We disagree with him, but yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had made the recommendation that they provide the deed risk, the access easement to the police department, because I don't know if he's aware of that. Like I said, I can't speak for what his reaction will be, but he might find some comfort in knowing that the Chelsea has agreed and knows that this access to the site is provided through their site, and always has been since they've been developed. So, once they provide a copy of that, I think the, you know, the, the police department may feel exactly the same way as from a, you know, safety or whatever perspective, but I do think that he needs that information in order to make, you know, a, a full review of it.
And that makes sense to me. So, so, would the action be for them to review it with the police department and get their concurrence that they, that they're no longer concerned?
No.
No, it's up to this board to determine if, you know, take what you will from the police officer's review, as well as the applicant's perspective and opinion on it, and, you know, you make the decision based on that information that's been provided to you.
And you, you have, you have the opinion of a professional engineer who's here before you, who, you know, is, is the most experienced professional engineer in our county. Or, maybe Mr. Simmons is the most experienced professional engineer in our county, and he's here, you can ask his opinion. Obviously, we respect the, the comments from the, the, the police officer. We made a change in response to that, but that isn't, that isn't, it's an opinion. It's not conclusive on the subject, and you have your expert here.
So, so it sounds like we could agree that there's a difference of opinion between Corporal Morris and, and the engineers here.
I, I haven't heard Mr. Simmons say that this is a safety concern.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure I'm looking for that when I say that in terms of, let's say between Corporal Morris and, and Mr. Dykstra, I guess it sounds like there's a difference of opinion in terms of.
That's why you have a professional engineer who can tell you from engineering standards and experience whether or not this is properly designed and is a safety concern.
I, I would disagree. I respect our professionals extremely well.
I get it, you don't want to.
No, no, I'm saying that we have the police department and traffic experts, professionals, looking at this from a safety standpoint too, which is beyond just engineering, there's two perspectives there. I think you're combining them into one.
Engineering clearly encompasses safety.
I think, I think the police department has a pretty strong view and a pretty clear view on what's safe for its residents as well.
You don't want to ask Mr. Simmons's opinion, I get it.
Yep.
You know, the thing, earlier you said, you know, the cops will have to stay there and, and monitor if they should go out of the one-way or come. I don't know if that's like a made-for-work scenario that I want to burden our police force with, sitting in a parking lot.
You could say that about every stop sign, and every traffic light, and every one-way in the entire town.
No, I, I understand that. I don't want them doing that, I'd rather them doing more important police matters than just monitoring if someone's going into one-way traffic area at a brutal place, won't they?
Mr. Chairman, also, I just want to note, and I'm just devil's advocate, the fire department also has a different perspective, so there's a, you know, a third or fourth perspective here, which also conflicts with the police department. I'm sure the fire department didn't request access or widening the access for any reason other than safety from the way that the site is, is designed and the access from North Village Boulevard. If, if North Village Bul, excuse me, if North Village Boulevard was blocked and a fire truck could not get access to the site, this provides access.
I understand. If. Board, this board's function is to take all the testimony and the evidence that will, will not in every case be the same or synchronized perfectly, and using the board's experience, weighing the credibility of the testimony, the, the, the experience of the people who've given their reports, the credentials of the people who've given their reports, and come to a conclusion as to what this board feels is the right thing to do. It's not that, you may not get everybody to agree, as you've indicated.
Correct, and I would just make a recommendation that this board does have the authority to say that that access can, can simply be for emergency access. It doesn't have to be for service vehicles. Certainly, right, the restriction for, for normal vehicles has been, has been limited. So, if the fire department, their request for it to be an emergency access remains on the table, and the fire, and the police department has an issue with, with service vehicles, you know, potentially having conflict with people trying to do a pass-through, you have the opportunity to restrict this to emergency access only, if you wish to.
I think the important thing is that it's, you're balancing two things with safety. If you have a truck driving in here, has to back out through a parking lot versus a truck that can come through one direction, fully visible of a parking lot. It's a much safer situation. I think that's where the, he's only concerned about the, the cars coming through and sneaking through, but the reality is, the pedestrians here are just as important.
When are, when are deliveries or service vehicles anticipated to visit the site?
Typically, Chipotle gets deliveries in the morning.
Before hours of, of operation are open, correct?
Yeah, they open usually at 10:00, they get, they start operation around 11:30.
And as far as garbage pickup, that's likely before 10:00 AM as well?
Correct.
I understand that.
These tenants could be.
Correct, correct, they, they, they could be, and I guess it's, that's what this board needs to look at also. There are two speculative tenants, which we don't know the, who's going to tend at those buildings, but as Mr. Dykstra mentioned, as far as deliveries and trash, you know, those things are happening. And I understand you don't want a truck, truck backing out or having to, but certainly, those movements will be a lot easier when the site is not occupied by other vehicles and people on the site. So, like I said, it is up to this board, if you just, if you make that determination, you know, to, to remain as a service vehicle and emergency access, or limit it to emergency access if it makes you feel more comfortable. I don't think there's anything restricting them from that.
I think you're just transferring the safety issue then at that point, because if the trucks got to come in and out of that main entrance, the delivery trucks, you're just transferring the risk of that scenario. You're not eliminating or reducing the risk, I think you're just transferring.
I disagree, because you're driving forward, you're not reversing. When you're backing up, it's a much more dangerous movement in traffic.
I think, Mr. Sylvester, I think you were agreeing with Mr. Dykstra. He's agreeing with you. He's disagreeing with me.
I was. To your earlier comment, and your, and the point you were making, I see where you were going with it, but you just conflicted that com, that comment. But, yeah, we're saying the same thing.
So, where, where will the delivery and service vehicles in this plan, what's their destination? Where on, where on the building will they be going?
The delivery areas here.
So, across, across the parking lot?
There's a striped area outside the, the garbage enclosure. You'll see it on the plan, I don't know the actual dimensions of it, but.
They're not going close to the building or to a door at the building, the, the side door, the back door, they're coming just to that part, the parking spot? How will the trash removal trucks get to the north corner dumpster?
Assuming they're on one delivery, they would come in, they'd pick up.
They would back into that corner and then exit?
Yeah, they're front-loading, so they pull in, load, back around, front-load here and then out.
Okay. All right, parking space size. So, again, when I look at the ordinance, I believe it should be nine by 20, where these appear to be, I guess, 18 by eight? Does that require a waiver?
They're nine by 18, but we oversize the, the access aisle.
Nine, nine by 18, but, so the minimum is nine by 20, right?
Correct.
So, do we need a waiver for these parking spaces?
Yes.
But we could make them nine by 20 by just extending the two foot of paint.
If, if you did that, would you have enough room between the two aisles across the?
You require 24 feet, we have 28 feet. We find that if we don't stripe them as big and we leave more access aisle, it's a safer parking lot, that's why.
So, are you offering to make them nine by 20?
I'd prefer to leave the spaces nine by 18 and the access aisle 28.
So, I think, it sounds like there's two choices, if I understand it correctly. We either need a waiver, or they have to be nine by 20.
All right, we'll make them nine by 20.
Okay. Let me just see real quick. And Catherine, I just, I, I know in the initial, initial summary, there was a concern with the number of parking spaces, given that some were dedicated to takeout as opposed to seats in the restaurant. Is that resolved, or is there still concern there?
Well, they did provide additional spaces to take, to account for the outdoor seating, and so there are additional spaces on the planet as a result. I do believe that it probably has resolved it at this point, also because in hearing about their operations plan, many of the customers that are coming to the site are going to be using those dedicated spaces, so I, I think it's, I think it's fine.
So, just, just for clarification, so when I look at, at the building, it's 2,530, 2,535 square feet, and the seating was done based on 885 square feet of service area. Does that include the serving area too?
No, so the, it's or, so it's, it's either whichever is greater, the amount of seats. So, the service area is, where's my hands? One per 50 square feet or 52 seats? I believe the 52 seats rules there, correct? So, that was the greater of the two.
Okay. And this does, it also does account for the outdoor seating, the 16 seats outside?
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like that we're good there?
Yes, and the, just so it's clear, the spaces for the other untenanted retail spaces are based off of a commercial requirement. And so, I don't know if there was a medical use or, you know, another restaurant came in, they may have to seek a variance, you know, the tenant will depend on that. So, right now, they're, they, they will comply if it is a commercial use, but depending on the parking regulation being a higher standard, there could be a potential for a parking variance if they did seek that in the future. But for now, if a retail, a commercial tenant came in, they, they would comply for both, or just one tenant with both things.
Your zoning officer would have to deal with that, if you got a, a medical use, they would shut them over because it's not, doesn't.
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Just real quick, construction timeframe to do this?
It's about six to eight months.
And all construction-related activities, delivery of all trucks, storing trucks, material will be confined to the footprint of this development, or you have other additional staging areas outside?
It'll be staged right on-site. We have an existing.
Where would that be?
The existing parking lot that's built here, we would utilize that for staging for the construction.
But that's, you don't expect that to affect the residents in townhouses? Is that correct?
I mean, they're not going to park on the street, is that what you mean?
Yes, none, none of the equipment, none of the staging materials will be on the.
Street, or other, even their vehicles, or trucks, material in other empty spaces in and around the other parking lot areas?
Correct.
And fencing around, obviously, will be covered?
We'll do temporary fencing.
One, one last question on the, on the traffic close. So, when I look, when you come in and you drive, come to the drive-thru and you, you pick up, and then you exit the drive-thru area into the two-way traffic. If I'm see, if I understand it right, that exit is driving right into head-on traffic coming in the other direction? Yes.
Exiting and.
Right, and now when that car comes out, he's, he's heading into two-way traffic in the wrong direction because of, because of the space of the loading. It's kind of forcing that to happen, so.
I thought that was a one-way, you have a one-way block right there, right?
Right there, right, so when he exits and comes out of that.
Going to stay right.
Stay right.
And there's room to do that?
Yeah.
With the expanded parking spaces, about two feet on each side?
So, 28 feet is shown on the plans right now, and it's going to be reduced to 24? Which is, which matches, does that match below where the, like, where the curb, it's 24 feet there at the crosswalk? Or is it 28 feet? Uh-huh, okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you, the hours of operation you mentioned early on would be till 10:00 PM typically, well, 10:00 PM. What are the hours of operation, are you aware of them, of the other surrounding businesses?
They vary. Depends on, Starbucks closes probably at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock. Industry closes 10:00 or 11:00, depending on the night. It depends on, I don't know their actual hours, but they're in that range.
Okay, I'm a little concerned about, again, the residential aspect. This is a mixed-use development, obviously, of having visitors, busy, busy, busyness and sounds and lights and things, you know, people are across the street trying to live, rest, whatever, walk the dog. 10:00 to me seems late.
It is a mixed-use development, and I think that says it, you know, it's intended to be integrated with multiple uses.
My experience is when you're on North Village Boulevard, it's very hard to turn on it if you're coming out from where the Starbucks is right now. So, I just can't envision what it would be like if people were trying to come in and out of there to the Chipotle up against the townhouses. And also, if you could just clarify, is it possible for somebody that is leaving the complex, the Chipotle, who typically would go right and then right back onto 206, they could turn left and go through Chelsea to go northward to take their family food?
They can't legally, but anybody could drive through there now.
Actually, can you, can you expand on that? So, if they go out the, the rear entrance and make a left, why can't they cut through there?
This is private property. There's no access easement through that section.
But they can drive through there to get to Chelsea.
Of course.
They could.
Yeah, thus far, we've only been talking about the service, proposed service entrance, people going upstream against that. So, there is a possibility, people just going out the, the rear entrance, the, the main entrance, and still cutting through or to get there that way, correct?
True for the whole development, though, and, and that's not our property, we don't control it.
We could sign this to no left turn if you feel that's appropriate. I think that would keep, at least, it would be a sign so people wouldn't, who are obeying the law, wouldn't do it. I think that would keep, at least it would be a sign so people wouldn't, who are obeying the law, wouldn't do it.
Where does that extend to now, if they did make a left into the?
This is the town, the back of Chelsea.
Can you, can you access the development through that Market Street?
Yeah, this is the town.
Yep.
And then you can come all the way back to Prosper.
So if you're going out to White Lake Road, you would, you could make a left there and make your way out?
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, let me continue down. Any questions down inside, anybody? Okay, I think at this point, we should open it up to the public. Anybody from the public?
Hi, Mike Devine in Oak Parkway. I've had maybe two categories of questions. Let me take the one I think is most important first. We're at a disadvantage because we really can't see any of the drawings, so I may be asking things that were already covered. If I try to figure out the, how you come into this place and exit, that's really, really the focus of my circulation questions. One way to come in, I assume, is beyond 15 North. Turn right at North Village and turn left at Cypress, is that correct?
You would. Coming 15 North, you'd make a right onto North Village and a left on Market.
Which is Market? Is that the same as Cypress Lane?
On the architectural, it says Cypress, but it's Market.
Okay, and then you would make a left into the Chipotle area?
Correct.
Okay, and then when you come out, you would reverse that? When you come out of Chipotle, you could either make a left or a right, is that correct?
You could make a left or a right, but the traffic pattern would be to make a right back to North Village Boulevard.
And then if you wanted to get back to 15, you would go down and make a right at North Village out to 15, is that right?
Yes.
So right now, if, for example, if I go to Shop Right, and I think probably a large percentage of the cars leaving that whole area comes out, I guess, is it Market? I don't forget what the street is, what I call Cypress. Come out there and maybe go to White Lake, but more likely turn left at North Village and then get access 15 that way, is that makes sense?
You would, there's two primary entrances leaving the Shop Right. Hit North Village. You'd take one of those and make a left, correct?
Okay, so let's assume you're going to come out and make a left at North Village. So you would have cars coming into that, picture that, that four-sided, North Village and the Market intersection, the four sides there, okay? You have cars coming in all four directions, converging into that intersection, is that right? Okay, now, it's, as somebody's pointed out, that's already a pretty difficult intersection, I think. If you're coming out from Shop Right and you want to make a left at North Village, I mean, I personally experienced difficulty with sightlines, looking here for cars coming and looking for cars coming in from 15, it's not an easy turn. If I now anticipate cars coming at me from Chipotle, I mean, it's going to complicate it quite a bit more. I'm a little concerned about, we don't have a good grasp on the additional volume of traffic from Chipotle. There was a suggestion that there's a correlation, unless I misunderstood, a suggestion that there was a correlation between number of parking spaces and the volume through the restaurant. I mean, I would think most of the cars coming in there are going to come right in, pick up their stuff and leave. I'm not sure they're going to need to park. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
There's a certain percentage of the cars would just go through the drive-through.
Right, so they'll come in, go through that and back out. They won't park, so that kind of undermines the correlation to some extent, I think. I would think that Chipotle must have some minimum flow per day to make it economically viable. And with all their other restaurants, they pretty have a pretty good handle on that.
I mean, when Chipotle looked at the volume of traffic on the highway at certain hours, that's how they decide.
So they make an assumption that some fraction will come off the highway into their facility? A little bit off to the side, you, if I understood, you talked about in response to a question, this could, I don't know if you meant the Chipotle aspect or the entire three unit, would equate to $2 million of tax revenue per year? Was that, did I misunderstand that?
No, we were speaking of the original economic impact study from, wait, when this project started. My recollection was that the tax, annual tax created by the site would be approximately $2 million.
When you say the site, you mean the three suites we're talking about now?
Eighty-eight acre North Village.
Okay, okay, so that's everything, not just?
Yeah, you'd never have a Chipotle paying $2 million in taxes.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to get at. I said, that's a hell of a, hell of a, a lot of hamburgers or whatever they sell. My bottom line is, that intersection, when you have four things coming together, you also, I believe, one part of that road have sidewalks, so you have the further complication of pedestrians. Now, I don't know what the, I hadn't seen the details of the traffic report, but it looks to me like a very hazardous circumstance. And then when you add in two more units for the building, especially if one of them could be another drive-through, which I guess is possible.
It's not possible.
It's not, okay. So the traffic has to be a substantial increase over what's now. I think what's now is already problematic. When you look at coming all these different directions, converging at that intersection, complicated with pedestrians, I think it's an extremely hazardous situation. You don't, you disagree? Why would you disagree, Owen?
It's not a major traffic producer of this site. That's why I would disagree.
It's not what I'm saying?
A major traffic producer. It's, I mean, by DOT standards, this wouldn't even require a modification to any permit for an access. So it's, it's a, it would not, I don't consider it a major difference in traffic based on what we had proposed.
Which gets back to the volume that's required to make Chipotle and the other two places economically viable. And we don't really have a good handle on that. My sense is, and I've seen Chipotle and other fast food places, is an awful lot of traffic. It has to be, because their product is not a high-priced item. They need a lot of volume, and there's going to be a lot of volume there. And I think it's already a problematic intersection, so I don't know what, I'll leave it at that. It's just the way it appears to me.
Thanks.
Hi, Mark Scott, nine Pueblo Parkway. Thanks for hearing me. You know, I think we really need to learn a lot more about the circulation here, the onsite circulation, what's going to happen? Because when this, when Starbucks went in, there seemed to be, at least I read the paper, some difficulty with traffic moving around. And Starbucks still seems to be doing pretty well there. And the traffic may have gotten, I don't know, better or worse. We're talking about, and we've been told time and time again in the past couple hours, about the traffic study that was done when we first did this project. But there was never a traffic study done once the project was completed. And now we have a big, big problem there with traffic and circulation. And like Mr. Devine said, you're coming off of 15, you're making a right-hand turn, and then you, and you have someone pulling out of Starbucks and making a left-hand turn, and you've got somebody, oh, suddenly across with Chipotle, making a left or a right-hand turn. So now you've got a lot more things flowing here. I think we need a traffic study. I mean, it's a very dangerous situation here. You've got sidewalks, you've got, as Mrs. Denbar pointed out, the children that'll be walking around there. You've got some of the coa units there. You've got a lot of children, you've got a lot of people walking on the sidewalks, people going from Starbucks over to Chipotle and back. So you've got people walking, and you've got all these cars moving, and you've got very little control. You know, this is really, this danger, this hazard that's happening here, this is a standard to deny this. You know, the developer continues to say that, you know, this is the way the approval was done, and this is the way it was done 10 years ago, 10 years ago. Remember, we have not had a study done since this asset was completed. We've had issues, and we've had problems, and there has been no traffic study done. One other thing. You know, I myself am in real estate development and real estate finance.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt. When we opened it to the public, I was of the understanding this was going to be for questions, not for statements. So I didn't put anybody under oath. But we've now veered a little away from questions with some commentary to actual testimony. And it's up to the, it's up to the board or up to you as the chair to decide, do we limit this particular portion to questions of the witnesses? Or are we going to allow questions and statements? We're going to allow statements, I need to put Mr. Scott and anybody else who comes up under oath. Mr. Devine was pretty close to making mostly questions and making a couple comments, but here we're deeply into making statements.
So I think if we're crossing a line, then we should put people under oath. I think it's important to hear people's opinions. So I'd like to put people under oath, please.
Sure.
So if you would, would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony that you've already given and that you're about to give or be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And we're going to do that with everybody who comes up, Mr. Chairman. That way, we don't have to demarcate between questions and statements.
Thank you.
Question. Why are we rushing here? Some of you, some of you, some of the professionals didn't get some of the paperwork till 2:00 PM today, it was stated. Why are we rushing here? You know, I, I'll testify for a second. I have an interest in development in Warren County. It took us seven years to get it approved. And we're rushing to get this done tonight? Okay. Mr. Dykstra said that the original approval 10 years ago with the 24 apartments would not be any different traffic-wise than the Chipotle. So I go back to Mr. Devine's math, and I figure, well, let's see. You've got 24 apartments, the people come go and go twice a day, that's 48 trips. So Chipotle is, maybe have 48 customers a day. I think they're out of business in day one. So, I mean, I think there's a difference here. Something that was, something that was approved 10 years ago is now being changed dramatically. The traffic flow has changed dramatically. We've already seen that the traffic is a mess over there. I think we need a traffic study. I don't think we need to rush here. And I would hope that the board would consider reviewing it again. Some of our professionals didn't seem to have all the facts tonight. And maybe we could get our act together before we make such a huge decision here to further impact Route 15 and North Village. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Landon Tanieri. I'm going to keep my questions brief and refrain from too many comments. But I'll still swear, and of course.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony about to give or be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So I get your notes right. State your name again and spell your last name.
Landon Tanieri, T-A-N-Y-E-R-I. So my first question was about the through-traffic between the Chelsea. Is there anything to try to mitigate that, not from service vehicles or any other vehicles, but just from an average driver to access Market Street directly from Route 15? That's a direct question for you guys.
Through the Chelsea property?
Yep, through Route 15 to Market Street.
Through the Chelsea property?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can answer that, it's not our property.
But you guys are using an easement acquisition to increase usage through that property that could, you know?
Easement this way, not this way.
So my point being is that there's still usability on that property regardless of, if it's a private property, we're saying yes, but that easement is just for that service lane. So even if it is a service vehicle pulling in through the main entrance, that's not under the easement, is it?
The easement goes from the entrance at Chelsea into my property.
So no vehicle would enter a service vehicle from Market Street?
It's coming this way.
Correct.
No.
So is there any way that maybe you could work with Chelsea to try to get some sort of signage for pedestrians or for drivers to not drive through and try to increase the traffic circulation in that area? Because that's something that could avoid having to put that burden on our police force because obviously you mentioned that is a violation. That's not, you know, traffic code to do a loop like that in between the entrance from Market Street for Chelsea and the entrance to the new complex?
You could certainly put a sign up that says no through-traffic. I mean, that's, that's up to them, that's not on our site.
Okay. The other thing I had was for the Chipotle, like, drive-through, I was caught off guard by the fact that it's only for online order. That's something that I think whenever we go to a drive-through, it's like just normal customers, it's, you can quite easily pick up. This is making some weird noise, but I'm sorry. But is there a way that, like, I have a funny feeling that a lot of customers are going to go there, they can, I'm going to order in the drive-through, and they get there and they find out they're waiting in line, holding up traffic, and they can't actually order?
Correct, so they'll have to pull into a parking space and go in and order? Or pick up their phone and order?
And could that increase to the traffic? I think that's the main question, because when we talk about the drive-through, I actually, I go over, I'm over in Morris County, so I picked up at Chick-fil-A. And they have two lines, your mobile and your pickup. Or your mobile and if you're ordering, there. And both those lines are very busy, but it's clearly illustrated. I don't think there's any illustration for any customer coming through from out of town or in town who are going to see that Chipotle, pull into the drive-through and then get stuck there, be like, you know, now I got to wait, pull into the line. I just don't think it's the best design. And then when we talk about the traffic study that we're discussing, that should be probably included in this, clearly, we don't have the numbers of the estimate of how many people plan on going to Chipotle. That's, you know, many factors apply to that, we all know that. But Chipotle certainly has some concept of how many customers they intend on coming to this location because why would you place a fast food restaurant there if it's not financially feasible for them? So I think for the public, it would be great for us to see how many people would be going on that location as a person that actually works in that area, how that's going to impact my time driving to work, my ability driving around Route 15 to get to the fairgrounds and other places. But thank you, and thank you for your time, planning board.
Good evening, Kathy Ebbinkhousen, Gutters Lane.
Swear you win, would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give or be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, so I can get it down and spelt, please.
Kathy Ebbinkhousen, E-B-B-I-N-K-H-U-Y-S-E-M.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning board members. So I have quite a few questions here, I'm glad there's not a time limit tonight. So the last time I checked, Mr. Dykstra, Mr. Wolverton, Mr. Brady, no one here is a member of the Environmental Commission or committee, right?
Dean is.
On the board or in the room?
Well, in general, but generally to the people that are giving testimony tonight, our professionals, the testimony. I'll take that as a no. Are you a member? Well, no, I'm asking you, are you a member of the Environmental Committee? Yes.
No.
Thank you. So what makes you think that you know better than the Environmental Committee's recommendations? Is my question to you, as the testimony you gave tonight seems to suggest otherwise. Is anyone in the room a hydrologist? No, I don't hear anybody speaking up. Does anyone else have qualifications to assess impacts to water in our town? Still hearing nothing. That's disheartening, because my question is to the board, can each of the planning board members, our professionals, those who testified today, guarantee that our water supply, our town's drinking water, will not be harmed, polluted or run dry? That this development will not cause harm to our town? Why do I ask this question? Because it seems like we're expecting to build on top of a wellhead protection area. And then my question is regarding that diagram, where is the wellhead? Because I don't see it called out here anywhere. And it's my understanding, based on the reporting, that there is a wellhead here somewhere, is that correct?
Wellhead protection area is much larger than this map. The wells, Sparta Township wells, there's one on Galeport. I believe that's where the wellhead protection area were within on this one.
Okay, so you're saying that building anything in this space would be? Okay, so you're saying that building anything in this space would be in the wellhead protection area? Is that all right, is that correct?
I think what Mr. Dykstra is saying is that most of the development is in the wellhead protection area.
So again, we're building more on the wellhead protection area. Is that correct?
And that's why we developed this with a sewer treatment plant where we're not discharging through septic systems. We're utilizing town water, it's a well-controlled situation.
Sounds like we're saying to this community that we're willing to gamble with our precious resource, that's water. That's what I'm hearing.
So I want to be careful because what I, what I don't want to do is, is, is put words in, you know, in their mouths that they're not saying. So, you know, certainly any, any opinion you have about what, what you feel, feel free. But I don't, I don't think it's fair to say, this is what I, I hear you saying when, I don't think that is what we're hearing, hearing them say.
It's my interpretation of what I'm hearing tonight. It is my opinion. Mr. Brady, why don't we have an environmental committee? That's the question I want to raise.
Act as, first of all, I'm not giving testimony, nor is it my job to justify either side. But as a matter of procedure, the environmental committees that are appointed in different towns are to give advisory opinion for consideration by boards.
Okay, thank you for that. And if that's the case, why is their work and research just being ignored? I understand they gave reports, you know, multitude years ago. However, I believe their reports were not in favor of building, just saying. Again, what is the purpose or use of the expected other two commercial units?
Testimony is that it's unknown at this time.
So that means it could be just about anything in that space, is that right?
I think what that means is that it could be anything that's permitted unless applicant comes back before the board and gets additional approvals.
Okay.
You want a reading of what is permitted in that area?
I would love one, thank you.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure, yeah. So this property falls within business, business transect six in the zone and transect SD, which is limited commercial. I'll first go through T6, which is the business transect, allows for a plaza, allows for retail stores for the indoor sale of goods or merchandise with seasonal sidewalk sales as approved by the subcommittee of the planning board at a maximum of four times a year, including general stores, bakeries, cafes, financial services, florists, ice cream pharmacies, sporting goods, apparel, bookstores, home furnishings, restaurants where all food sold on premises is served at tables within the restaurant. And clarification of that, there is an allowance for outdoor seating as a conditional use, which this application is part of. Specialty retail defined as shops that cater to a specific market which are linked by architectural, historic or geographic theme and by commonality of goods. The specialty retail center consists of smaller shops of 2,000 to 10,000 square feet of floor area, theaters, convenience stores, hotels and conference centers, which may include health clubs and spas, catering facilities and restaurants open to the public, but ancillary to principal use, access to all guest rooms shall be via hallways from main lobby and medical clinics. And for the SD transect, plaza, restaurants where all food sold on premises is served at tables, hotel and conference centers, same as the one I just read for hotel and conference centers, supermarkets, banks and banking offices, theaters, fast food restaurants with drive-through facilities, medical clinics, public utilities. And I just want to clarify what I said before about the parking. They are going under approval as these is commercial uses. So even though the other uses are permitted, if there's a higher parking standard, while they wouldn't need any use variance approval for those uses, they might, may have to come back before the board for a parking variance if the use has a higher standard than what they are going for approval tonight.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to keep going. What mitigations are expected to prevent traffic from impeding Route 15? The existing intersection is very busy, as some have stated here tonight, prone to motor vehicle accidents, as I'm sure many of us in this room have witnessed. We don't want to impede people from coming and going from the Chelsea either, especially ambulatory services considering the nature of the Chelsea. So back to my question, what mitigations are we expecting to prevent spillage of traffic onto Route 15?
I mean, the mitigation was done as part of the original application and those were the modifications to Route 15. We added the...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The mitigations were included, incorporated in this development as part of the original application. They were the traffic signal intersection, signaled intersection, as well as adding lanes to the highway.
Okay, we see how well those mitigations are working considering the amount of motor vehicle accidents. Has any thought been given to idling cars and the fumes expelled from the cars sitting in the drive-through? I think the answer is yes, but I would like to point out that this specific location is specifically very close to a building that houses seniors. We're talking about idling pollution, we're talking about what would come from the smokestacks of the cooking, all of that being right on top of our seniors. I just want to point that out. If, if you have any comment to that, I would appreciate it. Okay, no comment.
I just have a follow-up question. If, if this board so desires additional information from the applicant, if this is continued, if there is other things that they are requesting, what I would ask is if there are any operational testimonies that can be provided about Chipotle drive-through. I've been involved in other fast food applications and have requested that they provide the average idling time. It varies very, very differently amongst different fast food facilities depending on how their operations is. They have a mobile only, so there are no at, onsite orders that are being prepared as people said, so it may change. But I, you know, that could be potentially helpful operational testimony that could...
One point I'll bring up to that, Catherine, is, I don't know if anyone else has done this. I, I'm certainly guilty of placing an order online and then going immediately to the drive-through. There's nothing preventing anyone from doing that and now still having to idle and wait for their order.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And these, the questions, can they be identified to the board and/or the applicant? Or are they open to both?
Well, the way that the, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name, Kathy, is proposing them, it sounds like it's open to both. I think mostly it's to the applicant, but I think she's, if the applicant doesn't answer, I think that she's expecting the board to give some feedback.
That's correct, that's accurate, thank you. In the future, if the Chelsea would have an outdoor space, does anyone think that it's a bad idea for seniors and also the people eating outside? To be exposed to all of what is being proposed here? Same thing with the lighting? I'm going to go out if I don't hear anything. I think that one was already answered. What does the word protected mean when we call this space a protected zone? And I guess that question probably is directly to you, since you might know a little bit more or I can direct it to the board.
I'm not sure when you say it's called the protected zone.
I believe somewhere, right, this is a wellhead protected zone. Excuse me, the word protected is used to classify the space, I'm not sure to what degree. Perhaps it is specific to the wellhead, but I believe the word protected is used to classify the zone in some way.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay.
Are you just referring to wellhead protection zone, like in that context?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if our professionals have insights around the DEP regulations around the wellhead protection zone, the area?
Basically, on the wellhead protection zones, they divvy it up between different levels based on the time of travel for a piece of pollution, if you will, to travel from the ground towards the wellhead itself. And it all, it's a function of how far you are from the wellhead. In this particular case, as Mr. Dykstra said, one of the closest wellheads is over off Gale Court under Commerce Park, part of the water system.
So then in that context, what does it mean to be protected? It's just a classification given without any regulation or rules or?
They basically look to make sure you minimize any source of pollution or any discharges into the groundwater that may ultimately end up at the wellhead and cause pollution problems for the water produced from that wellhead.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe this is considered 98% still to this day in a critical wildlife habitat, as Dean brought up. Do we know what wildlife is considered in this space and why it is deemed critical? And that's a question to the board.
Yeah, we, we have some information on the critical wildlife. There is eastern metal lark, which is a species of special concern, a threatened species, the savanna sparrow. And those were just two that were highlighted, so there could be others.
Okay.
This is based on NJDEP.
And they're considered critical because they're, are they at a low in terms of volume?
Yeah, yeah, so threatened obviously is a higher level than special concern. So the first, the eastern metal lark was special concern, the savanna sparrow was threatened. There's also endangered above that, and some parts of Sparta have endangered species as well.
And this is critical, is there another level above that?
Critical is the general term to describe any of those tiers.
Got it, thank you.
Kathy, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt one second if I could, just to do a time check. So we still have an executive session and, and some other business to take care of tonight. Do you have a feel for how much more you've got there?
A couple more, not many, I'm at the end of my second sheet.
Couple more, okay.
Yeah. In 1996, Mrs. Dunbar noted the land should not be developed as part of the Environmental Commission. Can you explain why and why that is still being ignored till this day? Perhaps Mrs. Dunbar, you can?
1996? Good for me.
You can answer that?
If I get up again, I'll answer.
All right, thank you.
Well, it's, it's, it's a wildlife corridor, it's critical habitat. It's, Sparta is actually the tributary headwaters for the pollen skill. And everybody lives downstream of us, so we have a special role in protecting our water and what we send downstream into these areas. So that was part of it, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. What analysis or reports do the township professionals do? I think we kind of figured out this is, the answer to this over the course of this evening, whether the circulation plan is safe and prevents congestion. We also saw what happened with Starbucks when Starbucks went in. Mr. Dykstra, I believe that was your parking lot. We don't want to relive that, right? We definitely don't. We don't want to have to redo this because we have a similar situation to what we had when the Starbucks was here. To that point, there is already a problem with the left-hand turn lane as some of the speakers before me mentioned. I can tell you, leaving this, leaving the Starbucks area, going out onto that main North Village Boulevard, the left-hand turn lane is not long enough. If you're going to turn left out of North Village to go back on Route 15, it is not long enough. So that's already backing up into the intersection to turn left that lane. People are over the lines in that left turn lane as it is. This is going to make it 10 times worse, in my opinion. So I want, I was hoping the, the board could consider that considering we already have really bad left-hand turn lane problems leaving North Village as it is. And now you're proposing to add another piece in that same section and people will definitely need, still need to turn left there. What impact will this have to the ingress or egress at the Chelsea? Are we considering or being considerate of your neighbors? Are we expecting any impact to the folks, to ambulatory, to folks visiting? I mean, we have a, a center, the Chelsea is there to help people and now we're proposing to kind of clog up the way that people, especially ambulatory, are coming in and out of it. So I think that's a, a big problem.
There will be no significant impact to that intersection.
I don't see how that's the case if you're increasing the traffic, Mr. Dykstra. That's crazy, but I hear you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if the witness gives testimony, to allow the member of the public to, to comment that that's crazy, it's completely inappropriate.
I'm entitled to my opinion.
It's argumentative and it's unproductive.
I'm entitled to my opinion and I'm a member of the public, Mr. Irwin, or Irson, sorry. All right, so I'm pretty much done. This may have been previously approved, but I'm not sure if the Chelsea was there at that time. This seems a bit uncharacteristic of our town to do this to the folks that live at Chelsea. And I take exception with the characterization that North Village is the reason our taxes have remained flat. We have perfectly capable financial individuals in our town that are quite capable of balancing the budget. So to take credit for that is offensive, thank you.
It's Anand Dash, 17, Bonda Rosa Trail, Sparta. I'd just be brief, first of all...
Swear you win first?
Yeah, please.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give or be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state your name again, spell your last name?
First name is Anand, A-N-A-N-D, last name is Dash, D-A-S-H.
Thank you.
First, let me just say, you know, a small community, it, you know, it pains me because I'm a colleague of John and Owen Dykstra, so it's not personal at all. And everybody wants to see a business succeed and, and personally, I like both of them. But the essence, what we've been talking about for three hours is reduced to this, in my opinion. The, the only legitimate basis for this board to be able to deny this application under the MLUL is ingress and egress onsite circulation, just a fully conforming application otherwise. Just my opinion, having frequented that area a lot, run there with my puppy, the ingress and egress respectfully presents a safety hazard. My, just my opinion, we have the opinion of the police township which you can rely upon. The single most important duty of this board that should weigh on its conscience is the safety of its citizens that it's protected, that is, is charged to protect. That is the first and foremost, and, and the applicant would agree. Now, they disagree, respectfully, they say it's safe, and I respect that. I, I think the board needs to weigh whether in its mind it believes this is a safe ingress and egress. Thank you very much.
Mike Devine?
Last time we didn't swear you win, this time we will, okay? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony about to give or be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. By the way, Collins always swears everybody and is a matter of course, so just to cover it. Of, of three minutes max, I promise. Back in the 90s sometime, I was on council or playing board or both. The North Village thing came in, then it was centered around ShopRite. It was tremendous pressure in town for another supermarket. At that point, we were down to one and it was questionable how robust that was. We recognized very much the problems with traffic. They convinced us that people were going to go through and out the White Lake Road. They could eventually put another lane in, bah, 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 bah. We didn't think much about the Aquifer, to be all on, to be honest. There was a great deal of disagreement on the planning board. I think frankly, we gave in because that was going to get us to ShopRite. In retrospect, I think it was ill-considered and I think there could have been a much better solution and we're living now with the complexities that that caused us. We're locked into things that we're batting our head against and it's going to continue on all sides of 15. At some point, we got to take a stand. Now, I think that the uncertainty of the circulation is a basis for taking a stand. Maybe they can convince us that it's still a safe, it's still a safe intersection, all their aspects are safe, but I haven't earned any quantification that can convince us of that. So I can't tell you your job, but if I were there, I would be saying, I want to be convinced in a quantitative scientific fashion that we're not going to get ourselves into a more, much more difficult, complicated circulation problem. Thank you.
Last, last question, hopefully?
Hi, Beth Broderick, 18, North Shore.
Raise your hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give or be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Sure.
State your name again, please.
18, Beth Broderick, B-R-O-D-E-R-I-C-K, 18, North Shore. Beth.
I actually have a couple of questions, I'll be quick, I promise. I have a question regarding the fence. A comment was made about a fence being put up and it not being able to stop a car if there's an issue. there's an issue. What will the consequences be? How can that be addressed? Why would anybody, whether it's Chipotle, a builder, an attorney, the town, the board, anybody that has any kind of influence, why would anybody be okay saying, hey, we have seniors, we have kids, we have traffic, we have buses, we have pedestrians? Let's put in a Chipotle with traffic in a bad intersection where the town and the police department have issues with the traffic and safety concerns, and not make it safe? And let's put in a fence that will not do anything? Is it for decorative purposes, or to say that we put in a fence, or is it just, we quote, did our due diligence, let's move on?
During the course of this hearing, we agreed to put bollards around the fence in order to protect it.
Which would stop traffic?
Yes.
To clarify, the fence is around the patio dining area in front of the Chipotle. I don't know if you were, if that was clear from before.
Not really. I'm not smart, I was an English major, I work in healthcare. All I know is, you're trying to put a Chipotle in a spot where the Sparta Police Department, Kurt Mars, who is the traffic safety guy for the town, has expressed concerns and says, hey, I have a problem with this, and we need to address it.
No, it's a very intelligent question. I was just trying to, to make sure that you knew that the fence, that it was just around the perimeter of the outdoor dining area, not around the entire perimeter of the property.
Okay, that's fine, but I was concerned about that. My, another question that I have is, overall, you have, there was a reference to a one-way access or street just for like, for the fire trucks and stuff like that, and there was a comment made about, oh, well, if it's one-way, nobody is gonna go the wrong way down that street. Can somebody explain the lot? Like, I don't believe that, because that's, to me, that's like saying, the speed limit in front of ShopRite on Route fifteen is fifty, so nobody is gonna go over fifty miles an hour. Everybody knows that in like, the four hours of the narrow, like, everybody speeds, the speed limit is fifty, fifty-five, whatever, everybody speeds. Sparta Police Department does not have the manpower to sit there and enforce the traffic. So I just want to make sure, can we look into that a little bit more? Because that doesn't make sense. It's like saying, don't go the wrong way in a target parking lot, and says one-way around the building, people go the wrong way. When you're dealing with seniors and kids, memory care, stuff like that, are we ready to deal with that safety issue when some frustrated, aggravated, inner-hairy person that doesn't want to deal with the Starbucks line and the Chipotle line says, I'm gonna go through here, and they hit a kid, they hit grandma? You know, can we look into that more?
So, there's been a lot of discussion on safety, I think there's been a lot of questions and answers. In terms of looking into it more, I'm not sure what else we can do. There's standards we're bumping up against. The applicant's talked about adding additional signage, additional bollards and stuff, so, you know, in terms of...
Can I give you an example of signage? Okay, not to be a smartass, but I kind of have a reputation of being a smartass when it comes to traffic. On my street, this says, there's a four-ton weight restriction, which means that if you drive a vehicle over four tons, that doesn't have business on my street, you will get a ticket if it's enforced. Do you know how many trucks drive down my street at four o'clock in the morning?
Okay, okay.
So, like, it's, the signs are there, that's great, but if they're not enforced, that doesn't matter?
I understand what you're saying, you know, but again, if somebody breaks the law, it needs to be reported, and then police will have to act accordingly. But we can't do anything here that's gonna prevent somebody from breaking the law.
I just want to make sure that it's noted, because, again, there have been a lot, like you guys have already said, there are a lot of concerns. Another question that I have, which I don't know if it was addressed or not, is, there was a comment made about Chipotle delivery being done in the morning, and I believe it was like, ten o'clock in the morning or something like that. Are you guys taking into account ShopRite deliveries, Starbucks deliveries, Bubacoo deliveries, Pizza One deliveries, all of these stores and all the restaurants along that row, plus ShopRite and the liquor store and their deliveries? Because I think that's all gonna have to factor in to volume and where the trucks are going, and residential volume, plus the residential facility there and all of that. You can't say, well, it's only Chipotle, and our deliveries are in the morning, after rush hour, after school buses. There's still life that goes on outside of Chipotle? And you have to look and say, okay, we're gonna have this spot, but what about everybody else and their delivery trucks? Where are the cars gonna go that are visiting Atlantic Health Industries, stuff like that, between ten and three, when the buses are coming back, or whatever school bus pickup is, like, drop-off? Because that's gonna create another safety issue.
Mr. Brady, help me here, if you could. So, again, so we're looking at this application, this site. I don't think we, we can look to the other sites around it and bring that into this equation. What's your opinion there?
Well, it is this site, although it's part of a bigger site. The fact that it's part of a bigger site, though, means that the traffic, say, at, you know, North Village and Market, right off this site, they're all gonna come together there. Maybe not every, all traffic, but that's a, so that's a pinch point that I think is legitimate for the board to look at.
Okay, thank you.
But it's mostly the circulation on this site that needs to be examined.
Okay, thank you.
Does the circulation, I mean, I thought we heard testimony tonight saying, the whole point of that easement and that entrance, allowing the service under emergency vehicles, was to mitigate some of that and keeping it just related to the footprint of this development, and not comprehensive to the entire development. It was actually, the purpose of that was to mitigate exactly that point, is the way I understood it, unless you guys want to...
No, no, of course, I mean, no one's gonna make, there's not gonna be delivery trucks to the Chipotle site for all the other uses across the street.
I don't know that the purpose of that easement was to do that, but the result of that easement is you have a way for service vehicles to come in Chelsea and loop into this site.
And then get out, right?
And the board has taken into consideration, in each of the applications, the Atlantic Health site where the deliveries would be, the Pizza One site where the deliveries would be, it's so, it's been taken into consideration, but we're talking about one delivery to one business here.
Thank you.
Are all the deliveries expected to come on the northbound side? It would have to come on the northbound side.
I have another question. Um, I don't know, hi.
Hi. So, again, I want to do a time check. Is it ten o'clock?
Oh, I just have one more question. I don't know if you guys follow some of the Facebook pages, but there was a very specific post today about a road rage incident, and it was right in front of...
So, I'm just not sure we could bring that in.
Okay, so, okay, let me, I'll rephrase it. How, because there is a very congested area, and we're gonna strike the whole, specific to a one particular post, tempers flare in that area. You have people coming northbound in two lanes. One lane was originally designed just for access to North Village back when it was put in, and as somebody that goes up that way, I've been here a long time, I know how that road's supposed to work. People go up the right lane to cut off the traffic that is between White Lake and Houses Corner. You are now proposing that Chipotle go in there, so you're gonna have people making a right at once, at the light, the access road. You're gonna have people turning right up by the Chelsea to get in, because that light's gonna get all backed up and they can't get in, and you're gonna have a cluster of cars. Can people look at the safety issue on fifteen, not just the parking lot and your lane and your access road and your service trucks? Because you already have an area that, on Saturday, took me twenty-five minutes to go from the train tracks at Bagel Station to White Lake Road on a Saturday in the middle of the morning. It was not rush hour, there was no accident, there was no anything. It was people cutting each other off to go to ShopRite and to Dunkin' Donuts and to Starbucks. You're gonna have a mess.
Understand your point.
Is there somebody I can email when I go home and come up with forty-seven more phone questions?
I think it is, again, we're up to ten o'clock.
Yeah, like, I'm not doing it tonight, I gotta go to bed.
Right. And you, I appreciate your comments.
Okay, if, you know, is there somebody that we email, or do we come back to another meeting if we have more questions on this?
I, I don't know.
Anybody that's been in meetings with me knows that I will come up with forty more questions.
Right now, you know, it depends if it gets decided tonight or not.
Okay.
Am I stating that right, Mr. Brady?
If it gets carried over, it will be announced tonight when the next meeting is, and check the website also.
Okay.
Okay.
Good luck.
Mark Scott. I was gonna only limit it to one, so...
I only have thirty seconds.
Okay.
All right. Did you just say there's nothing we can do? This is the way, we can't get a traffic study? We can't do anything about the circulation? We can't review that? Is that what you just said? I'm sorry. I didn't understand it clearly.
So, I asked a question.
Respectfully, Ron, I didn't understand it.
So, I asked a question, can we consider that? And the answer was, it's a valid point and should be considered.
All right, so we can do a traffic study. This is our town, and you are our representatives.
So, so, I'm gonna need some help from our professionals on this one, because, you know, typically, when we do a traffic study, do we do it for a particular site? What are the rules for a traffic study, and what's your recommendation here? I've never seen it done before for one site.
May, may...
Yeah, please.
If it's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If you would just indulge me, I'll maybe, really quick, but I just wanted to just cover some things really fast.
Okay.
There was a comment that the professionals got materials today, not true.
Okay.
Okay? Didn't happen. Number two, there was a comment that there was no consideration of protecting the water, adverse impacts to the water. Absolutely not true. I mean, Mr. Simmons, I'm not, you know, stroking him here, he's the, the water engineer in Sussex County. He writes these memos, if there's a water concern, he brings them up. The traffic, the issue of the one-way and the traffic restrictions, I understand the speeding argument, I get it, right? But if that's, if you want to take that argument, then no sign that you ever put on a site plan should ever be taken into consideration, because they could all be violated. Every development you do has stop signs and alleys and right-turn only, and, you know, everyone could run the red light onto Route fifteen, all of it's hypothetical. The most important thing is that what you have in front of you tonight is quantitative. This has been developed to engineering standards. There's rules, there's guidelines, there's regulations. Engineers develop these programs. Mr. Dykstra's an experienced engineer, he designed the site, he took some consideration to the comments, he redesigned the site. Again, you have the very best engineer who hasn't said that there's anything wrong with the development of the site. It doesn't violate any guidelines, any rules, he doesn't have, at least in his report, he hasn't expressed that any of these pinch points, turns, backup lanes, none of it creates a safety hazard. So, again, you can hypothetically say, what if this and what if that?
Yeah.
But you, I'm asking you to weigh heavily the objective design based upon engineering standards and the input from your engineer, and Mr. Dash, in the end, he and I sometimes agree, he's right. It's a fully conforming application, there's no reason to deny it unless your engineer says that some site distance, some turn, some point, something here does not comply, is wrong or is unsafe, and he has not said that. And thank you. I know we're getting late, so I tried to rush a little bit.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. So, at that, at this point, I think I want to stop, stop the questionings, unless, and I'll bring back to Dyas one more time, if anybody has any additional questions, if we do, we have to open up to the public. Any additional questions up here? Okay, so, with that...
I have one thing, Ron, if you don't mind. Is there any, is there any, assuming, under the hypothetical situation that something across the street gets developed, right now, when you leave this parking lot and you make a right to go back onto fifteen, there's a right-only lane and a left-only lane. Eventually, there's gonna be supposedly a straight lane. Is it the left or the right that's gonna be optional?
It'll probably be the right lane. It'll become a straight and a right turn. The left lane will stay left.
So, that lane could essentially get backed up more, and I forget who said it before, but the traffic is already impeding that left-only lane, which would block the traffic from leaving this parking lot. There any, is there any preventative measures to halt the traffic when you leave this parking lot and exiting back onto that street?
I'm sure I understand the question.
You suggested earlier that you, you would be willing to make a right turn only out of there versus making a left?
Oh, on Market? On Market, coming out of here.
Sure. That what you're going with that?
That would lessen the traffic that you're talking about.
But again, it's a hypothetical.
Well, I think we should take the future plans of what is potential there into consideration.
Like, maybe the question is, if that property across the other side of fifteen is developed, are we able to make that developer make changes to the other side of the street to another lane in?
Well, DOT probably would.
Right, so it's, again, it's hypothetical, what happens if something is developed across the street? If you add more traffic count from a non-approved development, you're gonna have to go to DOT and, you know, make whatever changes they want you to make.
Then they're gonna make changes to the, they're gonna make changes to the state highway, though. They're not gonna be able to force changes to this development, but you have the problem with, you can't really...
It's a public road, so...
Overly speculative conditions on this developer. It's one thing to say, well, maybe we should, at some point here, maybe back when the zone was first developed, make for some extra-wide streets within it, extra-wide North Park Drive or extra-wide Market Street, but you didn't. He's complying here to speculate.
And, 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 Mr. Brady, it's a public road, too.
Okay. That's true. I'd forgotten that, that it's not inter, it's not internal in that sense, right?
But that's not an approved development as we sit here today, correct? And they would be subject to doing and going through the entire process, including additional traffic studies, dealing with the state, the county, et cetera, right? So, and they would factor in any impact related to that completed development across fifteen.
They'd have to do traffic counts and see what the impact on that light is, what the impact on the light at Houses Corner Road is, et cetera. And just like, in this instance, they had, had to go through the process of getting a light and adding a lane, you might have something similar on the other side.
Okay, so, Mr. Brady, I'm gonna ask for some help here. So, we're at ten-ten tonight, we still have an executive session we have to do. Does it page to try to carry this forward to the next meeting, or what's, what's a good way to do this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you call the question, if you, if you ended questioning, and if the board had more questions, then of course.
Okay.
But you, you ended questioning the testimony.
We did, but then it came back to Dyas, and I have to go back to the public with additional questions.
Public had the right to both ask questions and make statements.
Okay.
There's been no additional...
Okay, so, do not, do not have to go back to the public.
I don't think you have to go back to the public, because we gave the public the opportunity to both ask questions and make statements. I think the question from the board's point of view is, does the board feel it has enough information tonight to make a decision? If it doesn't, then I think it should let the applicant know what more, what information it needs additional, and see if the applicant would consent to extending the time to act, because I'm sure we're probably pushing up against the deadline to act, and come back at the next meeting. If the board feels it has enough information, or if the applicant doesn't agree to an extension and wants a vote tonight, then the board can act tonight. It has to weigh all the testimony. As we said before, we have some opinions that don't mesh, you have to decide which opinion kind of coverage here and, and go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Day, I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Enright.
I gotta, Kath, Kath, I have to stop. Questions are done at this stage, I apologize, but that's, I gotta follow the idea.
Mr. Enright made a comment that I would like to support.
Um, I have to, I have to stop questions, so I, we can't go all night back and forth.
It's open to the public already, so we close it.
So, so, with that, let me ask the applicant, there were things you heard tonight about, about the Lot Eight entrance, about the, about the bollard versus fencing, there was information about the architectural design. Is there anything that you would like to have additional time to modify?
Respectfully, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I think based on that, I think we could, we could do a... So I think based on that, I think we could, we could do a roll call vote.
Would it be possible to get corporate officers' input on, based on the parking lot changes and the, some of the traffic concerns that he had, modification could be made tonight? The ones that he made, that they're making.
So I think that, that, you know, the applicant has the right to say that they'd be willing to extend more time to do that. I think the answer I've heard is that they don't feel that you need that time.
You, you have Mr. Simmons here who is.
Understand.
Is an absolute expert in circulation patterns and compliance with regulations in a parking lot.
So I, I think the answer is now we have to take the information we have and make our decision based on that.
Mr. Hurson, would, would you, would the applicant be willing to get more information around average vehicle volume on, that would be on the property or average idling time to address some of the circulation concerns, some of the ingress, egress concerns?
I think the testimony that's been provided tonight, that this is, first of all, not a stacking lane, not a drive-through lane. This is an order ahead. Cars idle themselves now when you stop. Cars that are directed to wait, those, we've agreed based upon your planner with a sign that says no idling. So I don't think there's any idling issue present. But there's, the Chipotle has already taken steps to minimize cars in the queue and idling, and we were agreeing that any car that stops to wait for its delivery shouldn't idle. So I don't think that's the case. The additional information about projected cars, it doesn't exist, so I can't agree to go get it. It's based upon your zone and the permitted number of parking spaces, which is supposed to be proportionate to the use.
I will ask, though, the parking spaces are for the size of the building. We don't know if there's going to be five people ordering and picking up food per hour or 200. And if it's 200, I'm very concerned it's going to back out onto the surrounding streets and then make egress and ingress even worse. That's why, that's why I want to know the number, the volume.
Correct, but there's no stopping in the lane. You pay on the app, you order on the app. When you pull up, the only thing you do is pick up your order. So there's no transaction. There's no backing up in that lane. The testimony is that if you get there and your order's not ready, they direct you to park over here. So again, it's very linked to the number of parking spaces.
You don't believe there's more information that you could be, you could provide on that? Is that correct?
I know that that information's not available to us. They, Chipotle comes and does their demographic study based upon the count off Route 15. What they do internally or how they do things, we don't have access to that.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's, you know, it's the size lot, it's an approved use, and it's an approved number of parking spaces.
And is there any consideration, I'm asking, you know, a repeat question, I guess, of not allowing that easement access, of closing that down as was recommended by the traffic engineer, the police? Is there any consideration of how that would impact the?
Your fire department has requested it. Our engineer testified that this is the safest configuration. Your engineer did not raise an objection to it.
Did our fire department request that or was there and they asked to make it wider for the proper use?
He requested that it be made wider.
Yeah, but it was there already. It wasn't, if it wasn't there, I believe, from what I read, it would not have been requested to be added, correct?
I don't know that.
Okay.
It was recommended. Was it required or requested, recommended?
All right, so once again, I think, I think we've, unless anyone, I think we've got all the questions answered. The applicants had a chance to consider our, our feedback, and I think you feel comfortable with what you have, that that's the right answer right now. And so I think we go forward with a, with a vote.
If someone has to make a motion to approve or to not approve, has to be seconded and then discussed.
We just sat here for three and a half hours with some conditions and all that. When you're going to, how does that get right into the res, the?
I've been making notes, I've been making notes as we've been going. So we can certainly go through them. If some, if the, if the, if the motion practice, so to speak, is someone moves to approve with conditions and someone seconds it, then I'll go through the conditions that I made notes on. Someone thinks I missed something, someone, you know, wants to add something, we can do that.
And, Mrs. Sylvester, I think we were very clear, all the things that were recommended by your professionals, we just wholeheartedly, across the board, agreed to all of them. So.
That made it easy because I was making notes as I went, and then I heard that, and it was like all of Mr. Simmons's report. But I'll just hit the highlights. That's okay.
All right, so does anybody want to make a motion to approve with conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
Sorry, who is the second?
Bernie.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to go through and hit some of these at least.
Okay, thank you.
There's going to be no order board, it's going to be, you know, a, an app-driven thing. Signs will meet all the architectural designs and requirements. Lights are on, dust till dawn, dimmed after closing. And I, I think, if I heard it correctly, the building lights and the signs will go off sometime after closing. Maybe not the day, moment they walk out the door, but we'll work out something with regard to that.
Anything on Ballards?
Ballards are going to go in. I think they were going to provide additional landscaping material for Dave to take a look at. I have here, applicant agrees to meet all conditions in Dave's report, and that's their September 27 report. I went down there and basically hit them again. Looking for the deed book and the page for all the easements so they can be referenced on the plans, I think. I'm not sure if that's in Dave's report, but it's, but if not, that. Per Catherine's recommendation, thermoplastic paint, New Jersey native species for landscaping, and I have that approved.
As much as possible. As much as possible.
Is it? Okay. Add a sign regarding idling in the pickup spots.
Did you get the parking spaces? Nine by 20 parking spaces?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't get to that yet, but I do remember writing that down. But you know what? I'll write it down a second time, just in case. Nine by 20 parking spaces. You can see me putting a star. All the conditions are starred. Adding ballards to protect that patio area. I'm going to add some additional landscaping on the Chelsea side. HVAC and the roof color is going to be one that'll soften the view, so to speak, from the Chelsea third floor. Have a note here, make sure I understand it correctly, that basically the placeholder signs on the plans for the tenants that aren't known, when those tenants are known, the actual sign will come back to the Site Plan Review Committee to be signed off on. Nine by 20 spaces, had a second time. This is probably something done routinely in Sparta, but I think it's worth being a condition that the zoning officer, so review the parking needs of the tenants as they're identified, make sure they're not going over the parking and send them here if they do. And that's all I have.
What, and the consideration for some type of brick added into the design?
I know that was discussed. I thought I heard the applicant indicate they were not going to do that, so I did not write it down.
Mike, sorry, what was that? What was that question?
I think that, to be fair, I think, I want to agree with everything, but I think the architect indicated that that would send us completely back to the drawing board, so.
Okay, that was going many different ways. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think two other conditions were temporary construction fencing around the worksite.
Mm-hmm.
The board discussed that, and I believe there was some signage proposed out on the entrance of the driveway onto Marcus Street for no left turn. The board brought that up.
We're right down.
Got it.
Okay. All right, we've got everyone's conditions.
Also built into this is the waiver, right? There's a waiver request with this?
Yeah, the waivers are built into the grant of the approval, and I have what they are written down here, somewhere in my notes. But they weren't conditioned, so I didn't start them.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I'm going to.
Do we want no left turn or do we want no through traffic? Because the people that live in that housing development.
Chelsea had to put up the no through traffic signs on their property.
There is no through traffic right now by Title 39, right?
Yeah.
As it exists today.
You're actually across here.
We'll cross there.
That's up to you, whatever. We're going to make them go out and then come back around and then go, and they're ready to work.
Oh, you're saying residents across, that live across the street.
Or right turn only.
Mr. Enright, you want the sign to say no left turn?
No. I'm saying the people that do live there would need to make a left to go back to their house. Oh, straight across.
Yeah, so if you said no left turn, anybody who lives over here could go straight across. People could go right, but nobody could go left.
Right.
Okay, so we have, Phil, are you, are you good with what you want there? Okay. So with that, I'd like to put it to a roll call vote.
Councilman Dean Blumetti?
No.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day?
No.
Christine Dunbar?
No.
Bill Enright?
Okay.
Justin Canales?
I'll abstain.
Angela Cassi?
No.
Ernie Reichstätt?
Yes.
Mike Sylvester?
Yes.
I have three yes, four no, and two abstain.
Motion does not carry.
Not carry.
Which leaves us with a denial, at least not an approval.
I'm sorry that it didn't work out the way that you were hoping.
They're going to. When can we take a? Three, five, four, three, four, three.
What I'd like to do at this point, we, we've got council updates, we've got other board business. So the other board business, we have to resolve that tonight, right? I think there's a clock on that?
Rockfall application?
Yeah. From NJ DOT, there were two letters we had. What do we need to do there, anything?
There's no clock for us. It's just information only. I mean, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just NJ DOT information in regards to the Rockfall mitigation project. It's just.
Just information?
Yeah, it's just their permitting.
Okay.
It's notification only.
And then we have the executive session. Why don't we, why don't we, real quick then, let's see if we can just get to town council, I mean, to updates, if there's anything real quick that's important we want to bring up tonight?
Just like a five-minute.
Everybody want a five-minute break? Okay, five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins back, so good night, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next part of the meeting is updates. Councilman Blumetti, anything from the town council?
Yeah, just three quick ones. Two ordinances were passed recently. 2316, which was a, a new food truck ordinance, passed its final hearing. And also 2319 was an update to the Environmental Commission ordinance that added on two additional members to the commission and also a student, an annual student liaison that would be from one of the schools serving in Sparta. And then finally, the Plan Endorsement Advisory Committee had its second meeting this past Monday and we're full steam ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Environmental Commission?
Yes, the Environmental Commission requested that we apply for the Highlands Council grant. And what this will do is this will provide us with complete funding in order to update our open space plan. And this would be via an open space committee, which. And this would be via an open space committee, which is guided by an experienced out-of-town planner, and involves residents. And we wish the result to be included in the master plan. There are three openings now. We had one resignation, and then the two additional from five to seven openings on the environmental commission at this point in time. And on Saturday, October fourteenth, we're going to do a fall cleanup with the green team, so please join us. And we're very busy, so we could really use these extra two people. We are, we have a green business initiative. We're reaching out to Sparta businesses to encourage them to become sustainable, and sharing our ideas with them to do so, and they can become green certified if they adopt three green improvements. And next spring, we're going to be engaging residents and green team members to plant trees in Sparta Glen, another opportunity. And there, we also reviewed the Sussex County Agricultural Development Board minutes for May fifteenth and July seventeenth, and there didn't seem to be anything in there that directly applied to us. And we've been contacted by the New Jersey Shade Tree Commission, and they're inviting us to attend their conference on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And of course, we reviewed very carefully the application that we all just heard. And we made updated recommendations. I believe it was, the update was in terms of lighting.
Okay, thank you. In terms of subcommittees, the minor site plan subcommittee met prior to this meeting. Nothing really new to report. We approved a few applications. We've got a couple more we've got left to do, but I think overall, we're doing well. We've got a couple old ones that were cleared up. In terms of the ordinance review subcommittee, we did not meet on the economic development zone. We haven't, we had some trouble, I guess, you know, this time of year with vacations and trying to get everybody coordinated. So we will try to get a meeting between now and our next, our next planning board meeting. And that's all I have. Onto the next thing, other board business. So Tom, could you help me out with this? So we've got two documents that we received from NJ DOT. Is there anything special we need to do there, or it's just be aware of them?
Will we be able to carry those to the next meeting, or do we have to?
Oh, sure.
You can carry them, and actually, they're just responses to the request for information that you asked Dory to send. And I have no recommendation about them.
Okay. All right, so we'll carry those, it sounds like. With that, let's open up to the public. I'm going to ask the public, try to, if you have comments, try to keep them brief tonight, so we can get the folks on the dais out of here at a reasonable time, which is, I guess we're beyond that now. So any comments from the public on any matters on the agenda not relating to the hearing or application for development?
Hi, Barbara Gomes, Link's Court. Is it possible for the public to get copies of the NJ DOT board business that you were talking about carrying to next meeting?
Is that on our website?
It was posted on the packet for this evening, yes. It is on there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hi, Mark Scott, nine Pueblo Parkway. I think in your closed session coming up, you're going to be discussing the two lawsuits that are up here. And I just want to say, you know, we're. On the first lawsuit for Mr. Dash, I believe we were sued on jurisdiction as to who had the right to. Right to hear the case, was it the zoning board or the planning board? Well, you know, the plan seems to have changed since it initially came in.
Mr. Scott, let me just, if I can.
Wait, no, I think I can speak to you.
I have an important clarification that I have to make. So we can't discuss the lawsuit, so we can't.
I'm not going to, I don't care if you discuss it, I'm going to just discuss it, okay. So. So I think it's in your best interest to kick this back to the zoning board, because the plan has changed. There was one train track coming into this development, Diamond Chip before, now there's four. So is it a truck terminal, or is it a warehouse? Number two. There's another lawsuit out there, and I think that's the Diamond Chip lawsuit. Remember, Diamond Chip is not our friend. I know that's hard to believe, because they're going to be bringing in $2 million of tax revenue. But it's only going to cost us about $10 million to handle, handle a new 48 million cubic foot building on our aquifer. These developers are prepared to fight for years and years and years. And the people of Sparta, and the planning board, and the zoning board, and the town council have to be prepared to vote, to fight for years and years and years. This is the biggest thing to happen to our town since Lake Mohawk was approved in 1927. This will change our town forever, forever, for generations to come, forever. You all have immunity from the lawsuit. I'm sure you'll all do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay. Seeing nobody else, I'm going to look for a motion, I guess, to go into.
Yes, I'll help, Madam, Mr. Chairman, it's a motion on a resolution to go into closed or executive session pursuant to section seven and eight of the Urban Public Meetings Act to discuss matters of pending litigation, Diamond Chip Realty LLC versus Sparta Township Planning Board, and Anand Dash versus Township of Sparta Zoning Board, Planning Board, and Diamond Chip Realty. The matter is to be revealed to the public upon the completion of all litigation and appeals and the removal of the need for confidentiality. Is there such a motion on such a resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Circle it.
Okay.
And a roll call?
Roll call, please, sorry.
Councilman Dean Blumetti?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Bill Enright?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Angela Cassi?
Yes.
Bernie Reichstad?
Yes.
And Mike Celester?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I will re-excuse Dave Simmons, because I don't think you need him for tonight any further. And I'll ask Dory to just record that dictated resolution as an actual resolution in the resolution book, and put it in the minutes in full.
I don't think there's anybody outside, let me just check.